At eight thirty this morning for Port Authority, we will now continue our Port Authority meeting that we already scheduled at eight thirty this morning. Like to announce the termination of the closed attorney-client session, but we will continue to convene today.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, given the board's discussion, I would suggest that you recess that meeting and notice the public that that meeting will be reconvened either after this regular meeting and before your workshop at one thirty, or following your workshop at one thirty, but it'll continue to be a closed attorney-client session. So at the moment, that session remains in recess.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion on that action? No, we'll recess at that. At this time, we will call together the Board of County Commissioners meeting December 2nd. If we could please stand for invocation of Pastor Ryan Deeden. Fall upon him. Praise Holy.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Father, we thank you for the privilege that we have to live in this great county. We thank you for those that have willingly stepped up and courageously step up to be in a place to make decisions that affect all of us. But we thank you for them because we recognize today that sometimes they're celebrated, sometimes they're scorned, but they're still willing to stand courageously, making decisions for the prosperity of our county. And we ask that you give them wisdom in every decision that they make, that the decisions they make would continue to foster an environment where creativity and business will thrive and prosper, and where every citizen will experience the justice that we have and an environment that we can all continue to pursue the unalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We thank you for that, and above all, let them make decisions that honor and glorify you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please try to pray. Praise Holy. Praise Holy. The Lord is the God of all, the Lord is the God of all, the Lord is the God of all. Thank you, please, for seeing this. For the honor of my need to keep turning their phones off this morning. Yep. I'd like to turn to Commissioner Malika.
Just a moment of personal privilege, Mr. Chair. I wanted to recognize and pay a moment of silence to respect the loss of Mrs. Sarah Farish. As you know, her family and was the founding members of the Grand Inn and so many things with service in their family, and I just wanted to recognize her passing last week. So just a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll bring up animal services. We have the pet of the month. Come forward. I think we have Gloria with us today. Oh, she's a big girl. Good morning, Gloria.
She looks happy.
Good morning, Karen. Thank you. Tell us what's going on for this month. I'm sure you've got some Christmas specials going on.
We have, this month, we are giving the gift of safety to all Lee County residents in the form of a free microchip. Gloria already comes with her free microchip, as do all of our adoptable pets. The gift of safety, it comes, it is the most important thing you can do for your pets. Please come on out. It is Monday through Friday, eight to four. You do not need an appointment. With a microchip, you're guaranteed if your pet does get loose and getting pounded, you have a five-day hold. You don't even need to worry about whether or not your pet's at our place. We're gonna call you. We're gonna let you know that your pet is impounded. If it gets impounded by one of our officers, we'll deliver it home for you. The officer's gonna drive it to your house. The best thing you can do for your pet, especially with the fireworks coming up on New Year's, wanna get your pet microchipped, come on out. We have, check the chip with the sheriff's office next Wednesday, so you can go to the Miramar Outreach Center. If you wanna get your shopping done, get your pet chipped at the same time, also for you that day. And like I said, Gloria is available for adoption. All our adoptions come with a chip, of course. And look at her. We will give you the, she's already got her candy cane collar and leash.
This is adorable. And also, you've got the port portal up now. Is it up and running now?
It is, and we will explain the whole thing with a video. We're very excited about the portal. Very exciting things coming. You might have seen a billboard, exciting positive changes coming, so we're gonna explain that in a little bit.
Right, great. And thank you for everything, and all your staff, the beautiful animals.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything. Thank you. Merry Christmas. Next, Commissioner Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I have the members of the Zonta Clubs of Fort Myers, Sanibel, and Captiva, if you guys would come stand right in front of the podium? I would like to read a resolution into the record recognizing you all. Stand right behind the podium here.
There's a lot of us.
Perfect, that's great. I'm so excited to have all of you here.
Thank you for letting us see you.
This is one of my favorite ones to do every year. Thank you for joining us today. I'll read the proclamation into the record, and then we'll take a picture real quick with all the commissioners, and then I would love to have the spokesperson say a few words afterwards, okay? All right, so the resolution reads as follows: Whereas we as citizens of this community recognize the worldwide problems of violence against women occurs even here in Lee County, Florida, and whereas violence against women is traumatic to the body, mind, and spirit, and can prevent people from being fully active participants at home and in the world, and whereas violence against women costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters and foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas in spite of some progress, we only need to look at our newspapers or watch television newscasts to see the unfortunate truth that violence against women has not yet been eliminated here in Lee County or around the world, and whereas during the sixteen days of activism, November twenty-fifth through December tenth, the Zonta Clubs of Fort Myers and Sanibel Captiva, along with all Zonta Clubs, are encouraged to take part in the Zonta Says No to Violence Against Women campaign, and take local, national, and international actions to influence the making and implementation of laws, as well as changing of attitudes and behaviors to end violence against women. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, proclaims that November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five shall be known as Zonta Says No to Violence Against Women Day, and we encourage all citizens to support ending violence against women and to eliminate the detrimental consequences it has on the well-being of our community. It's signed this second day of December by our chairman. Congratulations, y'all. Thank you for being here. Let's go ahead and take the picture together real quick, if we can. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if we could have somebody just say a few words, that'd be perfect.
Speak while you guys still stand?
That's perfect.
Thank you. I don't know if I have three minutes, I'm under five, but I'm...
Yeah, somewhere around there is perfect.
Thank you. So on behalf of the Zonta Club of Fort Myers and the Zonta Club of Sanibel Captiva, we are deeply honored to accept this proclamation today. During the Zonta Says No to Violence Against Women campaign, we stand with communities across the world who refuse to look away from the reality of violence against women and girls, especially those throughout the sixteen days of activism. Thank you for shining a public light on the issue that touches women and girls in every corner of our community. As our proclamation states, violence against women remains one of the most widespread human rights violations in the world. It crosses age, race, culture, and economics, and its impact lasts long after the point of harm. Zonta Clubs are part of a global sisterhood in sixty-four counties, all united on one belief, that every woman deserves safety, dignity, and a chance to thrive. And it truly is global. At our most recent convention in Brisbane, Australia, the city lit their capital buildings, their bridges, and even the governor's residence orange, as a show of support for the work Zonta does worldwide. It was very powerful, but it reminded us all that the real work happens right here at home. Here at the Sanibel and Fort Myers, we invested thousands of dollars into organizations that lift up women every single day. The Abuse Counseling and Treatment, or ACT, Partners in Breast Cancer Care, After the Rain, and the Deaf, Hard, and Hearing Center, where our grant helped launch a support group for deaf and hard-of-hearing women in need. We also continue our partnership with FGCU to encourage women in STEM, and we offer a scholarship that helps a non-traditional woman return to her education and strengthen her future. At the Zonta Sanibel and Captiva Club, even after they've been hit by the recent hurricanes, and still walking the long road to recovery, their members have never stepped back from their mission. While rebuilding their own homes and businesses, they've given more than fifteen hundred volunteer hours in organizations that lift up women and families, including those that confront violence head-on, like ACT, like the Human Trafficking Awareness Partners, or HTAP, the Children's Network of Southwest Florida, Salus Care, and many more. Their ability to serve others while rebuilding themselves says everything about their spirit, and it reflects the very heart of what it means to be a Zontian. The sixteen days of activism observed around the world from November twenty-fifth to December tenth is Zonta's call to action. To orange the world, raise awareness, influence policy, and stand with survivors. And this proclamation is more than symbolic, it sends a message to every woman and girl in Lee County. You are seen, you are valued, and the community stands with you. Commissioners, thank you for lending your voice to this global movement. Your support strengthens our work locally and reinforces the belief that a safer, more equitable Lee County is possible. On behalf of the Zonta Club of Fort Myers and the Zonta Club of Sanibel Captiva, we proudly accept this proclamation, and we recommend, we recommit ourselves to building a better world for women and girls right here at home.
Thank you. Well done. Thank you. Nice to see you again. Merry Christmas. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies, for coming down and recognizing your great organization. And we'll move on to the recap. We have a couple items to, for items to be deferred and corrections, C eight, C nine, and C twenty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to make those revisions and corrections as outlined on the recaps.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any public comment on those corrections? Come back to the board. Any objections? No objection. Motion carries. Thank you. We want to consider agenda. Items to be pulled for discussion by the board. Commissioner Hammond, any items?
I have none today, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roy.
I have none.
Commissioner Malika.
I have two I'd like to talk about, number nine and number forty-six, please.
Number nine and number forty-six. Commissioner Malika, okay. This time, we'll ask public comment on items nine and forty-six, and any other consent items. Any public comment? We have a card from Marsha Ellis.
Yes, thank you.
On number nine and thirty-five.
Am I just commenting on number nine at this time and waiting to comment on thirty-five, or doing on both now?
Up to you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Marsha Ellis, for the record. I'm commenting on two items this morning. Item number nine, which is to approve the acquisition activity and tier-one placement for two Conservation Twenty Twenty nominations, and the second item is to approve the inter-local agreement with the City of Naples for recyclable materials processing. So in speaking to the agenda item number nine, which is the Conservation Twenty Twenty lands, I will point out that these two movements of these properties into tier-one, that sort of improves their prospects and places a priority on them. It basically is prioritizing two very tiny parcels, a three-point-five acre parcel and a nineteen-point-five acre parcel. And this has been par for course, and conservation Twenty Twenty has been administrated for a number of years, where we've seen very small parcels in crew lands, five acres at a time or a few acres at a time, as being acquired while other parcels today, because we have some very large and prime parcels that are being brought forward, those are being pushed back, or they're not being carried forward. So I think that we expect as a community to see that the sixty-five million dollars that are being raised through Milage for this program, that there is more robust acquisition of the many properties that are under consideration by Conservation Twenty Twenty. And I would like to see this trend towards smaller parcels broken. And then on item number thirty-five, which is basically to bring in recyclables from Naples into our MRF, and I'm assuming that's a clean MRF, not a dirty MRF. And so to take those recyclables and run it through the machine or whatever, I'm a bit concerned with what might be kicked out of that machine if some of those recyclables don't qualify as being something that we would legitimately be able to sell for profit. What's gonna happen? Because I don't wanna see more plastics from communities outside of Lee County being brought in and burnt over at our incinerator. I'll remind the commissioners that we've got kids playing baseball over there practically every night during baseball season in the winter and in the spring, and I don't wanna see plastic brought into our community and burned around our children. So I would just like to get some clarity on what the process is, what we could anticipate in terms of how much is being kicked out of our MRF, and what those impacts could be so that we can discuss it with clear transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the consent agenda?
Right, I agree.
Come back to the board. Motion to move the balance in the, move the balance first, move the balance, and we'll come back to Commissioner Malika.
I'll second it.
Any objections? No objection, motion carries. Commissioner Malika, number nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on number nine, we have two parcels, so I'd like to take this apart one at a time, please. And I know we have a workshop coming up on Twenty Twenty, and I do look forward to that. I know we all wanna make sure that we support the program and get the most value for our money to preserve as much good land as we can, and we wanna be strategic on that. So the first parcel off of Palm Beach Boulevard is the one that's called one forty-three dash two. I see where that cleans up the existing preserve area there and kinda completes the square and cleans that up. So that's a three-and-a-half acre parcel, and that ties that whole thing out, so it's all under one control. So that makes sense. My only question on that one is that the, at least in my opinion, and then is that the, it said there was a mention of bankruptcy proceedings in the middle of that one, and I don't know how that would tie up a real estate transaction or negotiation if it's part of those proceedings. That was my only question on that particular...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Clemmons to present. Robert?
Yes, sir. Robert Clemmons, County Lands. That's my understanding as well, that this property is going through a bankruptcy or foreclosure action, and it's just settled through the court-appointed official who's given the responsibility to convey it if we're able to come to terms, and we would write this into any contract coming forward if we do come to terms.
Does that add any difficulty to our process?
Not necessarily. You know, typically, if someone's in bankruptcy or foreclosure, they're wanting to liquidate the asset, and having a readily available buyer is a positive in that situation. So I see it as a deterrent to going forward with this.
Okay. No, and that's good. I wanted to make sure that that wasn't an unusual situation. If we thought we were gonna buy it, we wouldn't close for two or three years if it was in the middle of some extended litigation.
If we ran into a situation like that, we would defer going forward with it, but this is something I think they're looking to liquidate and come to terms on.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on the first parcel? All right, so thank you for that. So on the second parcel, again, I support parcel one forty-three dash two. I don't support this next purchase of six seventy-one, and I'll tell you why. If you look at the, I don't know if we have the map, Andy, or if it's in part of our slides, but this particular parcel only scored thirty-five points, and it had two key dissenting votes on it from the Twenty Twenty Committee, which was somebody, people that we all really respected, is Ron Inge and Carl Baracco, both didn't agree with this particular purchase. This is a nineteen-acre parcel on the Charlotte County border. It's inaccessible for us to get to the site. It's a mile and a half off of Burnt Store Road, and it's in the middle of a five-hundred-and-ninety acre state preserve. It's the only isolated postage stamp square in this whole area that would be ours to be responsible for, but we can't even access it. So I don't know the public benefit of us spending taxpayer dollars on that particular site.
Yes, sir. If you look at this particular parcel, this is an infill parcel, it's probably a half-mile away from a property we own on Burnt Store, and we've had agreements with the state to allow for cross-access on their properties. I mean, we can make this a condition of this property, that if we go forward, that the state would grant us access over their properties if there isn't legal access to this, and if there is not legal access, that would be taken into consideration in the purchase price, which would bring that purchase price down as well.
So if it's inaccessible, just play that, what are we gonna do to better this conservation area if we don't buy it and it's left alone to its own natural regrowth?
The potential...
What's, what's...
Sorry.
What is the benefit to the taxpayers of the county?
The potential here is that the property owner could seek way of necessity over adjoining properties to get access to their property and perfect access and come forward and perfect that access and go forward to build on it. We have had that situation occur on a couple of Twenty Twenty properties recently, where property owners have come to us and were seeking way of necessity, and we had to come to terms in selling those properties. So simply because they do not have legal access at this time doesn't mean they can't petition the courts to secure that access.
But if they haven't done that for all this time, why would they pursue that tomorrow?
What I'm seeing now is these infill properties are becoming desirable. You have a situation where you have, this is almost a twenty-acre tract of land, completely surrounded by state land. There's a lot of people that would like that exclusivity. I'm working on one now where we have that, this very scenario.
They need their own mosquito control district out here. I mean, this is just swamp.
I will say, this is similar to the area I grew up in as a child, so...
How much of this is dry land, another twenty acres?
Excuse me?
How much is dry land? Are not submerged on this?
And we haven't done an upland-wetland determination on this. I think the characteristics are all pretty much similar to wet land, but that doesn't necessarily preclude someone from building on it. And that brings up a point as well. By buying these properties out, it allows us to secure these properties so someone doesn't come forward to want to develop it and then pursue some type of Burt Harris Act if we felt that it was wet and shouldn't be built upon.
I can't even imagine the time and expense it would take to build a mile and a half of private road with utilities to serve your alleged new potential home site that would be cost-prohibitive versus any other residential site that you could drive to today.
We're seeing development occur in a crew area along Okegran, Benita Grand Drive, in that transition area between Lee County and Benita Springs. Years ago, when I was working on acquiring land in Crew, it would have been a scenario where there wouldn't have been any houses in there, and now there's quite a bit of development on those perimeter properties.
Okay. Robert, I could ask a question. What is this, if this is fully surrounded by state parks, now what does the state acquire this nineteen acre to make all their parks whole there? Why have just a piece of our puzzle Twenty Twenty there? Wouldn't it be better for conservation overall for the project itself if it is all consistent?
Being under state ownership, yes, I would think so. As an infill parcel, I had heard, and I don't know this, but the party has spoke up about the state's funding, that they seek larger properties as opposed to smaller properties. But I don't know if the property owner petitioned the state whether they would pursue this or not. And this isn't something I'm looking to fall on my sword over, I'm just, you know, this looked like a viable property for conservation purposes because it is surrounded by other conservation lands owned by the state. It's in close proximity to the, some ownership that the county owns on this north boundary on a tract that's adjacent to Burnt Store Road. I wouldn't expect it would take a lot of management responsibility because of many of the things that you brought up. You know, the access to it is, from the standpoint of traditional vehicles, is gonna be difficult for passive purposes, you know, kinda fits into what's going on in the Yucca Pen Preserve at this time.
No, I appreciate it, and I'm not trying to really, I mean, I support the program, we all do. I just, I wanna be strategic with our money for taxpayer dollars to, we don't fritter it away a little piece at a time like this, and then we find a big opportunity, and then we're underfunded because we frittered it away a million dollars at a time on some of these outlying lower points. But I would like our subcommittee to, if they approve everything that comes through their office, whether it's twenty-three points or thirty-five points, you know, it just seems everything comes to us no matter what, and I'd like to see us not just be the cleanup last buyer or last resort for these parcels. But I personally would like to make a motion to support the first parcel and not the second one.
It's your motion.
It's my motion.
Your motion. For a second.
You wanna do the first one?
I'd like to...
Excludes the second one?
Yes. I just don't see any value in that outlier parcel in the middle of five-hundred-and-ninety acres of state preserve that we're gonna create any public benefit for Lee County. It isn't already there if we don't buy it.
Okay, the motion falls alike of a second.
I appreciate it.
Another motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll make a motion to approve number nine as presented.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on number nine? Marshall already spoke on it. Come back to the board. Any other discussion?
Just briefly, I respect the comments, absolutely, and understand even the logic behind it. You know, some of the things that I have always championed when it comes to the Conservation Twenty Twenty, and I wanna be consistent with past votes, is that it does make sense to buy parcels that are adjacent to larger existing preserves because you're expanding existing preserves, and even though that one preserve is under state ownership and this would be under county ownership, certainly we could look at the potential for entering into a management agreement if management really became an issue. Doesn't sound like management's gonna be a big issue for this one, but if it became an issue, could maybe even look at a management agreement with the state where they could take this nineteen acres into their larger preserve and manage it as well. But I have always found that, again, instead of, if this was a nineteen-and-a-half acre standalone parcel in the middle of, you know, in the middle of a whole bunch of other development, that wouldn't make sense, right? But this is, this is expanding a preserve that's in Cape Coral. It's very hard to find conservation land to purchase in Cape Coral, and for those reasons, I kinda wanna be consistent with past votes and support this.
I can respect that. Again, I think we made our points, and I understand.
Well-stated.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Number forty-six. Mr. Malika?
Number forty-six, I'll be brief on this one. The reason I brought this up, one, I wanted to say I think it's great news that the DOT got federal funding for these repairs for the signal at Crescent Beach, for Fort Myers Beach. The mayor brought this up to me many times for this intersection at Crescent and Estero, and I'm glad to see this project moving forward. The reason for me pulling this item is because I respectfully, all of you gentlemen work tirelessly through Hurricane Ian, and from what my understanding is, our direction after the hurricane was, wherever possible, whenever possible, always seek outside, federal funding first, and then come back to us. So I just wanted to make a point to see if there was a moment of discussion for new board direction. This particular project costs twenty-two thousand dollars to fix this intersection signal, correct? This is from what it's been presented to us, and we waited, it took us a year to go through the process of obtaining the federal funding and grant agreements and all the paperwork, and I'm concerned, one, on a small project like this, that the cost of the process, paperwork, staffing, those things cost more than the work itself, that if there was a mechanism for staff to give us feedback on some of these smaller opportunities that we could accelerate, a intersection like this or like project for such a small dollar amount, that we might make a choice to accelerate that as we have on other projects in the past, rather than just a blanket board direction forever post Ian. If you follow my logic.
Mr. Chairman?
So if I may, just ask, so to clarify, are you saying, yeah, are you saying if there is an opportunity for some of these smaller dollar projects for us to go ahead and just fund it ourself and expedite the project and just get it done, take advantage of that?
To ask staff to give us direction, if they find those opportunities that we wouldn't see on our own because we're not in the middle of their day and seeing what these opportunities might be, if they say, hey, we can value-engineer this request for this twenty-five thousand-dollar job, it's gonna... hey, we can value engineer this request for this $25,000 job, it's going to cost us more to get the free money than it does to not just pay for it ourselves.
I couldn't agree more with you. I mean, honestly, I think sometimes we got so stuck in and trying to chase these federal dollars for these smaller dollar projects, exactly what you said, you'd spend more money trying to do all the paperwork and audit trails and everything like that that comes with taking the federal dollars when we could have just, like you said, it's $22,000, which is a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but when you have a $3 billion budget and you have $100 million in reserves, you can handle the $22,000 expenditure and get this light fixed that needs to be fixed for the people of Fort Myers Beach as opposed to making them wait for a year. I think, I think that's what I care about. So yeah, no, I support that.
That seemed reasonable. Is there a criteria we're going to come up with to have staff present? Is there a dollar amount that we're going to relook at? Is there, you know?
I'm open to suggestions, but at the concept of what Commissioner-
It's actually, I think, you know, you hit a point. I'm just trying to understand at what point are we nimble and at what point do we actually spend more dollars than we will step on? So there's got to be a threshold of some dollar amount. I don't know if any manager has any thoughts on that. Obviously, there has to be some efficiencies, and I think that's what the commissioner's looking for, efficiencies and expeditions projects. But at some point in time, the time that you invest is going to be less than the dollar amount. So I don't know where we draw the line in that.
Well, I think the county manager probably got a light now. We're currently under, anything over 100,000 has to come back to board for approval, but anything over 100,000 he could do, or she could do today and expedite that if you had board direction. Do you need board direction to do that or?
Yes. The original direction from the board was to maximize federal, you know, reimbursement. So therefore, what we could do is, I think we, we can have over 300 projects, am I correct in PA? We have over 300 projects that are being funded federally. We can go through that list and come back to the board and show you, we can lay out a couple thresholds for you and show you those thresholds. I can tell you where they're at at the same time of if I can get it quicker by funding it internally or if it's on the path to be funded and it's going to be around the corner. I can give you all that information leading into the 20th board meeting.
I think that would be really helpful to understand where we are. We're in the 90 percentile of almost getting the funds. Probably doesn't make a lot of sense.
Sure.
But if we're in the early stages, let's just look at that list. I think that makes a lot of sense.
I think that from what the county manager's trying to explain is if prior board direction says always go for outside funds first, then they have no discretion of $10 item to do that without us. So as an example, if the county manager has a $100,000 purchasing threshold without us, we might just ask what, anything under $100,000, if they found that opportunity, it could still be on our agenda, we would just have that opportunity to move forward and say, we would like to recommend this to be on the agenda because it's just like this one, it just would have been twelve months ago.
I would just love to see a list so we understand of the 300 projects, are there, how many are we talking about?
And also, if I could ask, County Manager, we talked about this before after the hurricane, we ended, we dealt with this with the park lights, the ball fields and stuff, but there were, that was over 100,000. But I think a lot of these projects also from DOT standards, if we fix it before that, we've lost the funding opportunity, correct?
Correct. And the board did give us direction to do some signal work, which we did do, and paid for out of our funding sources as opposed to waiting for federal dollars. And specific to this signal, it, we did get it up. It just had some functionality that wasn't working, but it was actually working on the beach at the time. So some of the functionality, I think it was a right turn or, I can't remember what, there was some functionality that wasn't, but the light was actually up. So where we can get things up as fast as possible, the board did give us that initial direction to do that and did fund outside of federal dollars for specifics to sig-
Maybe the list could include the 300 projects and also about if there's any loss of funding based upon-
Correct.
Reimbursements, if still FEMA-
Yes.
If there's a loss there, we fix it internally or not?
Yes.
And if we have a 50% match, like I say, sometimes you wait two years to do a project and the cost doubled and we get half the money back and it would have been the same if we paid cash to begin with. So can we make, can I make a motion to direct staff to come back to us with a report on the 300 projects as discussed by the county manager to give us those status and updates?
Is that including number 46, approved and currently 46?
And to move 46.
Just a motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
We have a second? Any public comment on item 46 in the new motion?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Come back to the board. Any other discussion? David, you did?
I'm good.
Okay, great, thank you. Any objections? No objection, motion carries. Thank you. We want the administrative agenda. Item staff, thankfully, is number 50. Minister of Defense, we're going to item 50, Boca Grand parking permits?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 50 is a request to approve an administrative code amendment to create AC 11-20. This is the Boca Grand Parking Ordinance Implementation Administrative Code. Commissioners, this action is required as you haven't adopted administrative code since you've adopted the ordinance dealing with Boca parking. This is in effect, direction to staff as to how to carry out that ordinance. Again, in the hierarchy of importance, the ordinance outweighs your administrative code and would control in the case of any conflicts.
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time? Michael?
That's the overview. I have gone through the ordinance and prepared what I believe is a reasonable review of the requirements of the ordinance for preventing or providing the permit that are identified in the ordinance. The overall goal was to make it as efficient as possible to reduce bureaucracy. I think I've accomplished that. The draft has been circulated amongst the members of the island. I've received some comments and corrections or some requests for corrections. Many of those who involve the ordinance itself. This administrative code, as Richard indicated, must be consistent with the ordinance. So as far as the draft before you, it is consistent with the ordinance. And while some changes were requested, they have not been made because they would not be consistent with the ordinance. I have answered questions on it already with members of the public on how it's going to be implemented. I'm sure more questions come up, but I'm here to answer any additional questions that you may have or any members of the public may have today.
Any questions for county attorney this time from the board?
Just a quick one, if you don't mind. I've had some feedback from residents and we have a very good website landing page that shows an outline of where to go and what time of day to, you can apply for those permits on like three-hour shifts on, for the next couple of weeks on there. Can residents apply or any applicant, can they apply online as well as, do they have to be in person?
That's a question for admin, if they've had that set up to be applied for online.
I'm sorry, what was the question? I apologize.
Can they apply online for the permit?
Can people reply online for these permits as well as the in-person three-hour time slots that were listed on the initial website?
I think right now it's just walk-ins, but we can work on getting online as well.
Okay, I know we have a lot of seasonal residents and other people. I just want to use technology to our advantage if we can make it easier for the-
Mr. Chair? I apologize, it is online.
Oh.
I apologize.
I like that even better.
Yes.
Thank you for confirming.
I'd gladly move the item.
Second?
We have a motion of a second. Any public comment on number 50? I have one card for Daniel Becker on number 50. And I have a lot of cards here that are very incomplete without information as far as your subject of talking point or what you're here to speak about. So this is your opportunity to speak when I call you verbally because most of the cards do not have the information who you're here to speak for. Daniel does, number 50.
My name is Daniel Becker. I'm a resident of District 2. For three years, I have sat in these chambers and watched as residents of Boca Grand repeatedly show up en masse, asking that something be done with the parking on the island. Eventually, the board took action, passing a parking ordinance and forming a parking citizen advisory committee. Now people who didn't bother to show up at those meetings or participate in civic groups are complaining about the ordinance. There are things I don't usually agree with that this board does. A lot of them I do, some I don't. But this time, they did what they were asked and are now getting kicked in the butt for it. There was plenty of opportunity for citizen input and engagement. If people don't like the ordinance, then work with the advisory group to modify it. There has been enough time and money spent on this issue. There are more pressing issues facing the 861,000 residents of Lee County than continuing squabbling about parking on an island with a permanent population of less than 1,000 people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on item 50, Boca Grand? Come forward, please.
Hello, gentlemen.
Hello.
Say your name for the record.
Good to see you again. My name is Mark O'Meoll. I'm the co-owner of South Beach Bar and Grill. And I realize there's been a lot of time and effort this, but I do want to bring attention, I understand what this gentleman just said. I believe that we have to bring to your attention that there is a Boca Grand boycott. And people want to say that there isn't, but we have proof that there is. And our employees are suffering because of it. They're real people with real consequences. The last two months, we've seen an economic decrease of about 36%. This coming weekend where Thanksgiving was, which is a true barometer of what we feel our season brings, we were down about 40%. You know, we're a year-long business and we provide for the community, we provide for off-island community. And we're not sure if, you know, this stays the same, we'll be able to provide that, those services all year long. So I do, I don't know how to reach out or discuss. I know Charlotte County is supposed to have a joint meeting with Commissioner Ruane, but I think something has to be done to compromise with Charlotte County. And that's why I brought it up today because we're talking about permits and we're going over permits issuing with our employees. But it's a real issue. It's really affectless economically. I've talked to some of the other people and the other merchants and it's affected them as well. So I urge this committee to go again and maybe communicate with Charlotte County and come up with some kind of resolution or somehow offer them parking passes. I don't know what the answer is, but I really think something needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on item 50 before we close this? Public comment, come back to board. We have a motion of a second. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 51.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to execute CDBGDR funding documents for Legacy Park 2 Affordable Housing. I'd like to ask Mr. Salyer to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have two CDBGDR affordable housing development projects on your agenda today. The first has some nuance that I need to take a minute to set up for you. The Legacy Park project is being funded in part by Florida Housing Finance Corporation. So they're not only issuing multifamily housing bonds, but they are putting state funds to the tune of $9 million into the deal as well. Because of that, they are insisting on the ability to be able to extinguish the affordable use requirement on the development should they deem that necessary to recoup state funding if they think it's in jeopardy. That puts us afoul of our obligations to HUD, which require that we maintain affordable use on this property for a minimum of 20 years. So we have been working various avenues to try to resolve this issue with Florida Housing. We've talked to all of their staff, some of their board inquiries with the governor's office. And to date, we have not gotten any movement on that. And so the developer is, I think, going to propose a potential indemnification plan whereby they would insulate the county against potential clawback of the funds from HUD. HTG's legal representative, Mr. Smith, is here today. He can provide more information about that proposal. We don't have anything formal in hand. And so really what we're asking for on this project is that you authorize us to proceed if we're able to work out a legal structure that is acceptable to the county attorney's office in order to protect Lee County. I do want to mention that the county attorney's office is integral to all of these deals. We thank them for all of their participation on every one of these. This one is a little, a little bit more complicated than most, which are all complicated. And so just a big thanks to the county attorney's office. I think with that, Commissioners, I'm here to answer any questions you have. And like I said, Mr. Smith is with us as well.
Any questions for staff? Do you have a public comment?
I'd love to hear from the attorney since he's standing in front of us.
Okay.
Sure, thank you. Sorry, on behalf of HTG. Mr. Salyer explained it exactly perfectly. There is subordination to senior debt, which is fine. In the extreme unlikely event that this property is foreclosed upon, the state would like to sell, would want to sell this as a market rate project, which then smokes, if you will, the 20-year requirement to keep this affordable, which then allows HUD to try to clawback this money. It is insanely unlikely any of that would happen, but to make it easy that we can, you know, let the state have their, you know, their ego, if you will, and we get our affordable housing, our client is going to indemnify the county in this unlikely chain of events if it occurs. The big deal here is we've got a deadline to close on all of our debt, senior debt and other debt on, and Commissioner Ruane, you know exactly what this means. If we don't close on the 19th of December, it's like a, it's like a 20-point BIP increase and amongst other things. So what Mr. Salyer is saying is we've got it worked out, we just need to paper it. And if you just approve us to paper this and into an agreement with Mr. Wesh's office, obviously, we will build you some housing and you won't have to hear from me for another year, I'll be in Vermont. So, yes.
How are you indemnifying us of this $9 million?
It's 10.3, I believe. We're going to, transactional counsel's here, we're going to work with the county attorney's office to paper that. I'm not, you guys know me, I'm not exactly a transaction lawyer, so. But we will, so long as Mr. Wesh agrees, which, I mean, you all said that, I don't do anything to hurt our hometown and, so we'll paper it and if Mr. Wesh agrees, we'll move on. That's it.
Listen, I'm comfortable with what I'm hearing here. I think it only goes to have additional prudence in what we're recommending. I think the safeguard we have is obviously the county attorney could obviously sign off on what Mr. Smith's providing. I appreciate the clawback situation. I appreciate the indemnification. So I'm comfortable moving this item as a motion provided that the county attorney is in full agreement with what you prepare.
Thank you very much.
That's my motion.
I'll second that, knowing he's got our backs up to cover the county's best interests.
Any other public comment? Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other public comment?
I'd love to just make sure the county attorney, if he has any comments, put them on the record, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you.
We thank you for the opportunity and we would certainly look forward to working with both the developer and the two other funding agencies. We certainly appreciate the indemnification provision. We would just like to ensure that the indemnification provision might include an analysis of the financial wherewithal of your client-
Of course.
-as well as potential other surety assurances. But we can have those discussions going forward.
Absolutely, it's very, that's very reasonable.
Thank you.
We'll take it out of my daughter's trust, how about that? She doesn't have it. I usually say good gators in any of these things, but we screwed up Lane Kiffin, so I'm not going to say it. Thanks, you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other speakers on item 51? We'll come back to board, any other discussion? Any other, any objections?
Objection?
Motion carries. Thank you. Number 52.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This executed CDBGDR funding for wave at Colonial Affordable Housing Project. I'd like to ask Mr. Salyer to present the item.
Thank you. Commissioners, this one is a little more standard, being that the senior lenders have agreed to subordinate their mortgages to our restrictive covenant, which does ensure the affordable use of this property for more than the minimum period required by HUD. So we would be putting $20 million of funding into this deal with your approval. Glad to answer any questions that you have.
So just a clarification, this is the typical structure that you would recommend and prefer for the debt subordination?
This is the structure that we've been using for the recent deals, Commissioners, and what we've, we've worked with the senior lenders to agree to allow our restrictive covenant to have priority over their mortgages so that if any of them ever did foreclose, the property would still have to be used for affordable housing. And that is the preferred structure for sure.
Good.
And this for the record, if everybody's watching, this property is in the city of Fort Myers, correct? Because we constantly get beat up, all the apartments being built in the county, but they're actually in the city of Fort Myers and the buildings are sterile, so.
Yes, sir. The majority of units being funded by the county through this program are in the city of Fort Myers. That is true.
Okay, thank you. Any discussions for the board?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion to second. Any public comment on this item? Item fifty-two. Come back to board. Any objections? Objection? Motion carries. Thank you. Fifty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to award contract for improvements of Lynn Hall Memorial Park restroom and the site itself. I'd like to ask Mr. Gerges to present the item.
Good morning. Ehab Gerges, Construction Management. This item to approve a contract with right construction in the amount of six million, fifty-two thousand dollars to rebuild Lynn Hall Memorial Park after complete destruction from Hurricane Ian. The funding is, has multiple sources, FEMA, TDC, and regional park impact fees. The park and the construction will include four thousand one hundred and fourteen square feet building with ADA platform lift and three picnic shelters. Every one is about six hundred and twenty-five square feet. We also improving the parking lot and adding eighteen more parking spaces for cars. We use the height and the space under the building to add more parking spaces. And we're also adding ten motorcycle spaces. The construction will start February twenty twenty-sixth, and the final construction will end June twenty twenty-seven. And I'm available for any questions.
And that funding, the sixteen, that's for the whole project, right? Not just the restroom we see? See what watches by, I think it's a very expensive restroom, but it's the whole park and the parking lots and everything else?
Everything. And we're also adding three access points to the beach.
On the beach side, yes.
If I can add this. I think it's not working. Anyway, three beach access with showers as well.
Thank you. Any questions for the board?
Just for the public's edification, too. I know they're going to be concerned about parking and access to the beach during construction. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. We are going to meet with right construction and see if they can just block a certain area for construction mobilization. And we can, we're going to try to leave as many parking spaces open to the public during construction.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question for you. And I know this may not be typical of county business, but I know the majority of the funding on this seems to be from FEMA and insurance, which is good. We have liquidated damages, I assume, for if they run over schedule in the contract with the contractor. If they're late, they would have liquidated damage assessments per day penalties for being late. Have we ever considered or tried to negotiate an early finish date with an incentive to move those days up to reward them for finishing ahead of schedule?
We don't have this in the contract, Commissioner, but I can work with procurement and see if there's something we can add to the contract.
Just to get that back open for the residents, if there's an opportunity for a win-win, right? They get rewarded for good behavior and we get the public benefit faster. I would like to see if there's an opportunity to.
We can look into this.
Look into that, please.
Sure.
Thank you. Any public comment on item fifty-three? Okay, come back to board. Any objections? Objection? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification. Are we, that motion, does that include Commissioner Moloko's request? Because that wasn't the original motion.
Would you consider amending the motion to approve it to allow staff to pursue an opportunity for accelerated completion? Sure.
I did make a motion. Thank you.
I'll amend the second then, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any public comment on the amended motion? Come back to board. Any objections? Objection? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Item fifty-four?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Can we, this item is to award a contract to reconstruct and improve Crescent Beach Family Park. I'd like to ask Mr. Gerges to present the item.
This contract, this item is to approve a contract for construction in the amount of one point three million dollars. And this is the same, the funding coming from multiple sources, FEMA, TDC fund and regional park impact fees. We are going to rebuild the site after complete destruction from Hurricane Ian. The site improvement will include three shared structures. One in the middle is about one thousand square feet and the other two are four hundred square feet. We have different and multiple ground cover, grass, sand and pavers and walkways, that compacted shell. We're providing the site with four, to the top, four access points that connect the site to the sidewalks and also four access points from the bottom here to access the beach. And these access points meet ADA. We also adding two restroom trailers with showers to your right hand, to the top. And also adding three hundred linear feet of built-in seating area at the bottom to provide seating areas for customers and citizens.
Great. Thank you. Great presentation. It's going to be a great addition to the beach with all the built-in seat walls along the beach, the potential access points, open spaces, showers. It's going to be a lot nicer down there. Any questions for staff?
I love seeing Ehab announce new projects starting. So, thank you.
Any public comment on item fifty-four? Come back to board for a motion and second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Any objections? Motion carries. Thank you. We're going to go into public hearing. We have a lot of cards. We've been in the audience since eight-thirty this morning. Would it be okay to take a five-minute restroom break?
Thank you.
Five, ten-minute restroom break? Or will we be here after? Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for your patience. We will now reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm going to, we will on to the public hearing agenda. I was going to ask my colleagues, we have a lot of speakers for the next agenda item, but we don't have one or just a few for number fifty-six. Would it be okay to go to fifty-six first? Take fifty-six and come back to fifty-five? Will you agree with that?
That's fine.
Sure.
Okay. We'll go on to item fifty-six. If the staff could change that to fifty-six, we'll come back to fifty-five. We'll get that one over there. We just have a few speakers to get their item off the agenda. The public hearing to approve the resolution creating a new Nancy Lane Water and Sewer CIP. Michael?
Yes, sir. This is your public hearing, your, well, now your second public hearing. Let me get to the page. Apologies. Yes, this is the public hearing to approve resolution creating the Nancy Lane Water and Sewer CIP. At the conclusion of this hearing, you'll have a, adopt the resolution to create the MSBU. The estimated cost of the project is two thousand, or two million seven hundred seventy-seven, yeah, two million seven hundred seven thousand sixty-five dollars. The assessments per parcel will be thirty-six thousand ninety-four dollars and twenty cents. And staff and our office are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, just for clarification, my agenda actually has this item fifty-six. On the screen is fifty-seven. I'm not sure what the board has it as. I'm making sure we're consistent. We hear same item. Mine says fifty-six, but.
My agenda has it as fifty-six as well.
You have it fifty-six? Okay. Fifty-seven on the screen, so.
I got fifty-six.
I have fifty-six.
Okay, go ahead. Any questions for staff? Okay, we're going to public comment. We have a few people here for that one. Bob Ivey? Is there Bob Ivey here? After Bob, we have Karen Carlson. Good morning, sir. You have three minutes. The lights will tell you it'll be green, yellow, red, when the red one, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bob Ivey. I reside at ten Nancy Lane, and I'm a member of the Nancy Lane Water and Sewer Committee that was approved by our Board of Directors in August two thousand twenty-three. In your packet, we provide a documentation that addresses the need for this project as well as a few documents that address some of the owner's allocations. Our grant writer, who is a member of the condo association, has provided a summary of the grants submitted as well as the critical information regarding the importance of the Nancy Lane Association being fully on board with Lee County MSTBU in order for us to be considered for any of these grants. Even going so far as to state that Lee County could consider applying for some of these grants on our behalf, as long as we're approved. This hearing will determine that. A repair done on three lots in May two thousand twenty-four precipitated a letter from the civil engineer, which gives a very good snapshot of three parcel area of the sewer line and the many issues that exist, including less than minimum required pitch or slope in the condition of the current undersized brittle piping. In fact, the only reason this repair was granted inspection approval was because we were in the queue for Lee County MSTBU. The current system was designed over sixty years ago and probably never had an engineering report done on it. Other documents in your packet addressed a few owners who do not want this project to move forward. Concerns such as legal authority, fees, additional expenses, which were all included in the engineering probable cost, these sheets were provided by the MSTBU to all of the owners. None of these folks mentioned the fact that the association has a reserve fund specifically for water and sewer. This reserve fund currently totals approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This will reduce the owner's assessment by at least ten thousand dollars. On behalf of the Water and Sewer Committee, we respectfully ask the commission to approve the project so we may partner with Lee County MSTBU and bring this project to fruition. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Next speaker is Karen Carlson. And then after Karen, we have Mary Werthel of thirty-two Nancy Lane.
Good morning, honorable Commissioners. My name is Karen Carlson. I reside at fifty-five Nancy Lane. The Nancy Lane project will replace the existing water and sewer systems. Both systems are outdated. The water system is old and problematic with multiple pipe breaks occurring due to the outdated design of the pipes not being buried deep in the ground in our waterfront yards. Both systems need to be replaced to ensure the health and safety of everyone on Nancy Lane. The estimated two point five million dollar cost includes the replacement of both the water and the sewer systems. The cost of each project is approximately one point two five million dollars. We want clean water that runs through clean, unbroken pipes that will deliver the water pressure needed to be sent up thirteen to fifteen, fourteen feet to the newly raised homes on Nancy Lane. This is the new FEMA standard since Hurricane Ian. I respectfully request this honorable commission to approve the Nancy Lane Water and Sewer Project. Thank you for your time. Karen.
Fred Zalt from thirty-two Nancy Lane. Fred, after Fred, we have Laura Danner.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Fred Zalt, and I live at fifty-two Nancy Lane with my wife Joyce. I want to inform you that as a Nancy Lane resident for over sixteen years, I have never been denied any information concerning the water and sewer project. Regular updates have been provided at our monthly board meetings. Emails have been sent to all owners on the street that contain the information about the project and contained attachments that provided the details. January twenty twenty-five, we had a large public, well-attended meeting with the Lee County MSTBU and the engineers who did the estimate. They went over every facet of the project. There were many others in attendance that had questions. They answered every single question from the owners in attendance about timelines, cost, how many bids, and what we would get, engineering and many other details on the project. I received a packet from Lee County two times and a Water and Sewer Committee at least once that outlined the probable cost for each owner before the Nancy Lane Association contribution for the project. It is my opinion, nothing has been hidden and everything has been shared multiple times. I am pleased that I am well informed about the sewer project. I recently was asked to be present at a sewer camera session. The company was contracted to jet out our sewer lines, then use a camera to view the sewer line system all the way from the access point to the lift station, a distance of over four hundred feet. The camera only made it sixty-five feet. Because the line was obstructed with rocks, dirt, bellies and unknown obstacles, the camera also found a significant crack or break in the line. This line crack and break must be located, dug up for repair. This is indicative of the experiences we have had at many locations in the past on the sewer lines in Nancy Lane. I respectfully ask the Commissioners to approve the project for the benefit, the safety of all the people who live on Nancy Lane. This is something we desperately need, not want. There are a few people who do not want this project because they don't live on the street. We, the people who live on the street, cannot live here if we do not have healthy, fresh water and a working sanitary sewer system, as we do not have any else, anyplace else to live. In closing, please, consider the people who live year-round on Nancy Lane. We need this. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Fred. Laura Danner, thirty Nancy Lane.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Laura Danner. I live at thirty Nancy Lane and have had the privilege of serving as the board of director, on the board of directors since December two thousand twenty-three. On behalf of the association, I'm here this morning to provide a letter from Becker Lawyers regarding the proposed water and sewer project, which has been provided to the clerk. The letter addresses the DBPR case filed by Ms. O'Connes, which is limited to narrow matters. Access to official records and the prior adoption of an amendment to the governing documents. The association denies any wrongdoing in these areas, and importantly, neither issue involves the membership vote approving the project or the association's work with the county on water and sewer improvements. The DBPR did not assume jurisdiction over any aspect of the project itself. As the letter states, none of the issues raised have any bearing on the county's decision regarding this project, one that was overwhelmingly approved by the association membership. I'd also like to share a brief excerpt from a couple who have repeatedly experienced toilets that stopped flushing and sinks that stopped draining. After hiring their own plumber to scope the line, it was determined that the blockage was several homes away. The root cause was tied to aging mainline infants, infrastructure. As they wrote, "This means that until Nancy Lane's water and sewer systems are fully updated, there will be, there will continue to be times when their home is simply unusable." They closed their letter by staying. "We are in strong support of bringing the water and sewer systems on Nancy Lane up to code and modern standards for all residents and for the future of the community we enjoy so much. The time is now." In closing, the association appreciates the county's consideration, and I respectfully ask for your approval of the project to replace the water and sewer systems on Nancy Lane.
Thank you. I have another card. Jim Layman. Jim Layman here. And after Jim, Rodney Willis.
Good day, Commissioners. My name's Jim Layman. I've been here since nineteen ninety-eight on Nancy Lane. And what we are going through right now is harassment by our board that has been, done nothing but pushed us out of here, not allowing us to use our homes for nothing. In the eighties, when we were developed, we were, they built a condominium campground, which our sewer system was designed for campers. Now, now, since our board has done all kinds of things without having a number of votes, they've changed our bylaws, our article declarations, and now they are, even the rules that allow them to sue me the most, to find me the most that Florida law will allow for having an RV on my lot that resembles exactly what was there before the hurricane. These people are, have one agenda, and that is to get us out and to sit there and that improves their property value in their opinion. But I have been a part of this committee. I helped them rebuild their home, and they turn around and they shit on us. I ask that you deny this and at least make sure that we get the required votes that's required by our condominium association. We are units. We are not a public street, and we need to be, do things. If it ain't good for two-thirds of the community, it ain't good for none of us. That's how I feel. And thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Rodney Willis, I believe it is. After Rodney, we have Jackie Osannis.
Morning, gentlemen. I appreciate you taking the time today for us. My name is Rodney Willis. I live on thirty-nine Nancy Lane, and I also have forty-seven Nancy Lane. I come to you today, I'm a new resident on the street. I wasn't aware of all the issues that we're having now basically on our street with the water and sewer. water and sewer. I guess I would have reserved my time and looked at it a little bit more closely if I've been informed of all this information. I think currently, right now, we're, we're leaning to some things that the state is looking at as well as far as what we're doing on our street. We do not have a adequate board. We're supposed to have seven board members, not five board members. And, and knowing that going forward, some of the resolutions that have been proposed on the, on the street, and I think we're, we're kind of getting railroaded a little bit here, I, I think we need to have a little bit more time in looking and dispersing what we need to do as a, as a group. We're not disputing that there is things and issues we have on our street, but assessing, you know, the $2.7 million that we've got going on right now for the project, I, I think we need to have a little bit further investigation on what we need to do. We are a private street, we're not a, really a condominium association. I own my land. I own both parcels on the street. That doesn't constitute as a COA, be more like an HOA in that capacity. So, in the same token, I, I think we need to investigate a little bit more. I would encourage the commissioners to, to recognize all the people that did submit some paperwork to you and saying, hey, I think we need to hold up, let's put a stop sign up and take a little bit more recognition on what's going on in our community. We certainly want to have the opportunity to, you know, to, to enjoy a little bit of slice of heaven there, that we, we call it. There's a lot of people, there's twenty open lots on, on the street. You know, some of these people have just come down for maybe a week or ten days. Our board, which I think is not right, we're, you know, we're, we're looking at just having a little bit of time for some of those people that want to enjoy what's on Nancy Lane and have that opportunity and not get slammed and saying, hey, you've got to do this, you've got to do this. I, I think we're trying to get run out for other reasons in, in the long term. It's, it's very discouraging. I would have not bought in knowing what I know today. And I, again, I've rebuilt electrically on the street, the majority of, of our community. I, I think we just really need to settle down and, and address this in a proper manner. But we have an attorney, we have a fund, which is the Nancy Lane, Save Nancy Lane Fund, Incorporated. We feel very strong on what we're wanting to do, but we're not saying that we don't need the help on the street. We do. We need to analyze it a little bit more clearly. I thank you for your time, gentlemen. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jackie O'Sannis.
For the commissioners to review.
Give it to the clerk.
I'm sorry?
We have what we need here. You can give that to the clerk if you like.
Thank you.
My name is Jackie O'Connes. I reside at 36 Nancy Lane, and I also own 37 Nancy Lane. I thank you for this opportunity to speak and place factual information on record. The residents of Nancy Lane come from diverse backgrounds, but we all share common expectations. The decisions affecting our property and our rights must be transparent, lawful, and supported by documented necessity. We have asked several times, I've included in the packet, for verification, which you heard them imply, but we've never seen any engineering reports. I'm not denying that this does not need to take place. I understand Ian played a huge bearing on us needing this, but I feel like it can be done less expensively and incorporate many more amenities. We could offer Wi-Fi for our street in doing this. We could offer many things, but we were never given the opportunity to speak to our board because we get closed down, shut down. They say they've done things legally, but honestly, they haven't, and that packet will prove what I'm saying. It'll show we have an open case. They only took two pieces of my complaint because that's all that they could act upon. But the rest of the complaints, they forwarded to arbitration, and those are now in arbitration, so I'm not sure where that's gonna play itself out. But our documents require three-quarters of our, our ownership to approve major upgrades. According to our records, our correspondence, the threshold was never obtained. Before the board submitted the water sewer project to the county, instead, the county rules were cited as justification. Unfortunately, they do not follow county rules when it comes to our RV being placed there legally until 2027. Through the state and county, we have been ordered to remove our RV on September 28th. Even though we requested attorney to be there to help us, they, they gave me till 9:30 the next morning to secure that attorney. That's close to impossible. I went to that meeting to defend myself, and after I was fined $75 a day per property, up to $1,000, and I'm not even sure the specifics, if it's a year, a month, I don't know. But after they did that, and I wrote a letter to them refusing to recognize it because these rules were not adopted properly, and they still continue to go forward. The fines have been placed, all this has been done.
Nancy, your, your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Any other speakers on this item for Nancy Lane?
Okay, we'll come back to the board for a motion now. Thanks for all the speakers being here today, and I understand your concerns there, and thank you for moving forward. Thank you to Josh and his staff for moving forward with this. So the speakers know, and obviously here's a lot of HOA issues, the board's item today is not to deal with HOA prior issues or those rules. We are here to look to approve the MSTBU for your community that was approved by your residents. So maybe staff can respond about how the vote was for that. I don't know if Josh could respond to that, or I guess was the vote done with the, the community and the, under the county rules of the MSTBU that was approved by the residents? This is a receipt.
Yes, sir. Good morning, gentlemen. So out of the formal petitions, we received a fifty percent, or fifty-five percent affirmative. As you're, as you're aware, we only require fifty percent plus one. There would, that, that does include the, the common area that was included in the vote. We removed that, and that is where we are, so fifty-five percent.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Josh, the staff of this one? Okay, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
And as far as concerns about transparency, everything now, this is approved today, this would be under the county, will be fully transparent, there's no, it won't deal with HOA meetings and all that stuff, so this is the process of why this process is much better, is the county is going to collect the money and pay for the projects and manage the projects, so come in and affect the board.
Can I just clarify a couple of points that I heard, please? So the, the gross cost of the project is estimated at $2.7 million, correct? And somebody had mentioned that there was a, I believe it was Bob, there was a reserve fund that the Association has on hand that would, is escrowed towards that, so it would actually be a plus or minus $2 million net cost?
Sir, we are not including the Association funds at this time until, until we actually have those funds. But yes, there is a potential that they will be contributing a significant amount of money to these, their funds, to this project. And I'm, forgive me, I, this is the first part of the question?
I'm just saying, I wanted to confirm that there was, the gross amount was 2.7, that wasn't the net after the reserve fund?
Correct.
So that this $36,000 a person?
Correct.
Or site, per parcel cost could potentially go down based on?
Yes, sir, and this is just, this is an initial cost estimate. I mean, this isn't, you know, this still has to go out to bid, it's potentially could go, you know, we could get, you know, lower on the cost.
So the county will administer the procurement process?
It will go through, it has to go through the.
So we get all of our competitive bidders that do all of our work, qualified contractors can participate and compete for this job?
Correct.
Hopefully lower those costs for the residents as well?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then, so we don't have a potential construction start date? If we don't have a bid on the street, it could be six months or longer until that?
No, this is just, this is just to create the unit. We cannot move forward until we create the unit. From here, we will go through and, and start with the engineering.
Design and then, and then bid after the design is complete. So this isn't going to start this season?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for our motion? I moved the item.
Oh, I'll second the item.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, 55. Come back to number 55.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 55 will be presented by Mr. Rob Holborn of our office, and it is. I thought we were going back to...
That was 56.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, are we doing 57 or going back to 55, the animal control ordinance?
That's what I was asking earlier, because I did not have a 55, 57 in my agenda, but it is, I found it behind 56, sorry. 57.
The last slide had a typo in the corner.
Sorry.
It said 56, or.
Yeah, I apologize.
But the, the book is right, the slide just had a typo.
Okay. Wait, this up.
There it is. Good morning, commissioners. David Halverson, County Attorney's Office. This item has been legally advertised. This item seeks the approval of a resolution of intent to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem special assessments for MSTBU projects. This will allow for the collection of assessments for newly created or completed projects. If there's any questions, staff is available.
Any questions for staff? Any public comments on item 57? Come back to the board for a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Any other discussion, any objection? No objection, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, David. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Now we go to 55. Rob has this one.
Good morning, commissioners. Robert Holborn with the County Attorney's Office.
Good morning.
Item 55 is a public hearing on the repealing and replacing of Animal Control Ordinance 14-22. This hearing has been properly advertised and the affidavit provided to the clerk. The proposed ordinance repeals and replaces the existing ordinance and provides changes to rules related to animal control and services. The proposed regulations were reviewed and approved by the Executive Regulatory Oversight Committee on September 10th of 2025. We also incorporated feedback from the community and listened to public comments and incorporated some of that feedback into the ordinance before you today. While not all-inclusive, the main changes to the ordinance include, as directed by the board, a one-day hold for cats. It authorizes law enforcement to take custody of animals in or who may become in distress. It provides clearer language regarding what constitutes menacing or threatening actions by an animal. It allows an animal not to wear a collar with tag if properly microchipped. Provides clearer language as to animals and vehicles. It prohibits the sale of dogs and cats under eight weeks of age unless approved by a veterinarian in writing. Provides clear language on what animal facilities can be inspected. It requires a permit to advertise, sell, or exchange dogs or cats in or within 50 feet of any public or private streets and rights of way without a permit. The most exciting is that the ordinance will authorize the use of a new public tool called Find My Pet Portal. The portal is an online self-help tool that allows Lee County residents to use their computer or cell phone to post photos of lost or found pets in the hopes that pets can be reunited with its owner without the need to bring the pet to domestic animal services. Think of it as neighbors helping neighbors, similar to those popular neighborhood apps that communities use today. With that, I'd like to bring up Pablo Adorno and Brandon Scribner to come up and speak about this a little bit more.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, a few comments before Brandon and Pablo approach the dais. Just wanted to share with you, you may have read in the media, and I anticipate you will hear in public comments this morning, that this ordinance doesn't go far enough. Throughout this drafting process, staff intentionally focused this ordinance on provisions that serve the broad public interest. We did not include any special interest items because our goal is to ensure the ordinance remains fair, consistent, and focused on its primary purpose, the safety, wellness, and welfare of both animals and our entire community. Including narrowly tailored provisions for specific groups or individuals could create the appearance of favoritism, complicate enforcement, and expose the county to legal or administrative challenges. By keeping the ordinance free of special interest additions, we strengthen transparency, we maintain our public trust, and we ensure that our policies benefit the community as a whole. So with that, I'd like for Brandon and Pablo to demonstrate the portal that we've developed.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Pablo Adorno, Animal Services. I'd like to thank the board and county administration for having our back, supporting us in what we do. Staff that work at our facility are hard-working individuals that, that take great care of the animals that come into our facility. So, and they're very appreciative of your support. So, but we are super excited about the portal. Brandon's been involved with this from day one, he's been leading it. It's been through different groups, so Brandon, I'll let Brandon explain what, what it's all about, and you can get a look at it.
Thank you, Pablo.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Brandon, I'm with Animal Services, and I have the privilege of assisting the development of this new tool. Commissioners, it's because of your support that Animal Services has the ability to collaborate with other county departments to develop innovative tools that have meaningful impact into the community. We'd like to begin by thanking the Department of Innovation Technology Group to include the GIS team, the communications team, the county attorney's office, and county administration for their help in developing and launching this tool. As Rob previously mentioned, the Find My Pet Portal is a community-driven platform, much like other social media platforms, but this platform offers a controlled and monitored solution for people to post lost and found pets. The goal of this tool is for pets to find their way home without ever having to enter the shelter. With the help of the communications teams, we have developed a short introductory video about, about the Find My Pet Portal. Please watch this video.
Hello, I'm Commissioner Cecil Penegras. I'm proud to introduce our new pet portal, designed to reunite lost pets with their families. This platform lets you report or search for your lost and found animals. While this portal will help reunite pets with their loved ones, we'd like to remind residents that responsible pet ownership matters. Keeping your pets licensed, microchipped, and in compliance with all local and state animal regulations not only protects your pet, it makes reuniting them faster and more successful. We invite you to explore the new tool, share it with your neighbors, and support our ongoing mission to create a safer, more compassionate community for all living beings. Thank you.
Lee County Domestic Animal Services' new Find My Pet Portal was designed as a community resource to reunite pets with their families before they reach the shelter. This portal uses geographic information system mapping to reconnect pets with their families. Posting a lost or found animal is easy, and you don't need to create an account. You will need to provide contact information that will be visible to other users, and every submission is reviewed by shelter staff before it is posted. To give the pet the best opportunity for reunification, fill out the form as accurately as possible and upload a clear and recent photo. Once the pet is reunited, please use the update an existing report button so staff can update the listing. Please also remember that this tool is supplemental, and it is still recommended that you actively search for your pet on lealospets.com and visit Lee County Domestic Animal Services in person at 5600 Banner Drive in Fort Myers.
So as you can see from the proposed ordinance changes?
Hello, I'm Commissioner Cecil Penegras. I'm proud to introduce.
Hello, isn't it?
That guy's awesome.
Good job, Brandon.
So as you can see from proposed ordinance changes and the launch of the Find My Pet Portal, Animal Services staff continue to foster a more responsible and caring pet community. Continuing the initiative of responsible pet ownership, as Karen mentioned previously, Animal Services would like to announce our gift to the community this holiday season, free registered microchips for the entire month of December at Animal Services. This will remove any financial concerns with microchipping your pets during the holiday season. With that, commissioners, staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Great. Any questions from staff of this one?
Thank you.
Thank you, Pablo, and thank you, Brandon, for the presentation.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Anything else to do? Thank you for all you do. I mean, it's unfortunate, we've been, we've been for many years now, and we've done changes, but it's unfortunate in our world, this becomes a political hot potato. Mayor Fox saw it eight years ago, I believe, and Sheriff Marcino saw it six years ago. We see it yearly here, political, people pick sides based upon political parties and groups they've gone with, and they use animals, obviously, for their platform, but obviously we're trying to do the right thing here for the county, protect the animals and provide services, so thank you, Dave, and your staff for bringing this forward today.
Any other questions, comments? We go to public comment? We have a bunch of cards, I'm not sure if these are all here for this or not, but we'll start calling Jerry Sorelli. After Jerry, we have Carol Wilson.
Hello, commissioners. So.
Welcome back.
What's that? Thank you. Something very important that I think should definitely be in the ordinance is not counting Sundays and holidays as stray hole days. I'm not sure if you're aware of the fact that Sundays, Lee County is closed, that counts as a stray hole day. Holidays, they're closed, that counts as a stray hole day. Dogs without a microchip only get a three-day stray hole period. Let's say that a dog is picked up on a Saturday, they don't answer their phone on Saturday... Let's say that a dog is picked up on a Saturday, they don't answer their phone on Saturdays, even though they're open seven hours, I'm not sure why, but that counts as a stray hole day because, say, an owner's trying to get ahold of Lee County to see if their dog's been picked up, no one answers the phone, so that's a dead day. Sunday's counted as a stray hole day, that's a dead day, and Monday could very well be a holiday, like a Martin Luther King Day, they're closed, so nobody can get ahold of them on that day, which gives the person looking for their pet very little time to be able to find them. So Tuesday comes, they can literally euthanize the dog on that fourth day, which has happened way too often. I think it's extremely important that it should be changed in this new ordinance, and please do not count Sundays and holidays as stray hole days. This is really a policy that's not fair to the owner or the animal. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Wilson. This is for the record, I understand, we're voting today on the changes of orders of fourteen dash two, so we do not, Board of County Commissioners do not have oversight of H R issues or who answers the phone or daily operations of any animals. This is for only animal control ordinance fourteen dash twenty-two that we're voting on here today, we have control, authority of. Carol?
Good morning, I'm Carol Wilson, I am actually second-generation Fort Myers, so I've been in the community my entire life. I am privileged to be standing before you today on behalf of Team Moose Rescue, I'm Vice President of Team Moose Rescue, I'm their lead volunteer and foster for Team Moose Rescue. Based on that, I'm simply here today to support Lee County Domestic Animal Services because from the front lines of rescue, which is a crisis right now, there is a crisis between the at-home breeding going on, animals unwanted running our streets, there's a crisis all across the country, but it also affects us here in Lee County. It is almost insurmountable on a daily basis. We at Team Moose Rescue want to be part of that solution, and that means we are happy to work with Lee County Domestic Animal Services. We support the ordinance changes that are currently in place. The places that these ordinances are still falling short, it's gonna take time, it's gonna take time and small steps forward to make their job easier at Lee County Domestic Animal Services. So, simply stated, there is a network of people who support Lee County, and we're here to help the animals of Lee County. It's a passionate subject, and behind the scenes, it can be heartbreaking. So, we're here to support Lee County Domestic Animal Services and be part of the network of solution that can help our animals here in Lee County. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol, thank you for being involved. Christopher Shear. Christopher Shear. Debra McKay. And after Debra, we have Laura Hepner.
It's McCoy. Hi, I'm Debra McCoy, I'm with Team Moose Rescue, I'm the president, founder, I've been here for ten years, our rescue has been about, I've been in the county for over fifteen years. One hundred percent, you know, for the ordinance change, it's time, we need the change, it's to help with the epidemic we have in this county, it's time we all start working more together. Lee County has been awesome animal control, trying to get the animals out and trying to find homes and trying to get the microchip to find the real homes. We have a lot of dumping in this area, but Lee County's working hard, the Animal Services, so, I mean, this new ordinance, change it, help them, you know, they're helping us, we're helping them, it's all gonna be part of teamwork to get this going, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura Hepner. And after Laura Hepner, Teresa Ink.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Lori Hepner with Animal Justice. How can you turn a blind eye to the plight of the pets at Lee County Domestic Animal Services and their euthanasia rates? The Director of Lee County has a vote of no confidence for not performing his duties, and this is all public information, by the way. He was hired in two thousand, twenty fifteen, and, and he was, and, and he was continually promoted to Parks and Recreation, then to Animal Services, and now to Director of LCDAUS. And with what qualifications? With many atrocities committed to the pets in their care, how can you continue to employ this liability? And he is a liability. We will continue to write letters and email all Florida officials, and Governor DeSantis is on our side, and the writing is on the wall. With the passage of Trouper's Law and Dexter's Law and other laws, the public is speaking, are you listening? We want to put an end to all backyard breeding, and all breeders need to be licensed and heavily taxed. And where is this spay-neuter truck that we were promised? We... Lee County needs a larger facility for these pets, as with the exploding population growth, we need your help. And, and there was a recent recall on Fort Myers Beach, and the residents were able to get this gun, so please take note. We will never go away, we will never, until we achieve justice for these pets. Thank you very much, and have a happy holiday.
And next speaker is Donna Thompson. Is there Donna Thompson here?
Hi, I'm Donna Thompson. I'm passionate about animals of all kinds. Animal control should not have more power than the police. Everyone is entitled to due process of law, not having to worry about an agency coming in and being the law, the judge and the jury all in one. Taking of an animal statement is too broad, I feel. I feel cats and other animals should have the same hold as dogs. And I actually agree with the first lady who spoke about not including the Sunday and the holiday as part of that hold time. Sometimes you don't even know, one day, in one day, that a cat is missing if it's an outdoor cat. Animal control enforcement officers should have to follow the same law. Police officers do with due process. It goes against the Constitution to allow power without due process, according to the Fourteenth Amendment. Remove animals based on what criteria? Law, policy, or opinion? The proposed amendment is too broad and wide to approve as-is. I feel the roadside exchange should be allowed for people who transport and exchange animals. I feel the Find My Pet Portal to allow citizens to list found animals is a good idea if it's used only for that purpose. I feel there should be more done to adopt out animals, saying breeders is the problem, I don't feel it's correct. I feel it's bad owners that are the problem, and more penalties need to be put on those people. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Ink. Cover that, Teresa. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So, I've been in Lee County about thirty-five years, and thirty years ago, I was on the Board at Gulf Coast Humane Society, and every day, people called and said, I need an affordable place to spay or neuter my pets. So, I was blessed to be able to do that, and I built a spay-neuter clinic in North Fort Myers. At the same time, the Board of Gulf Coast decided that we were not doing a good job of Lee, of animal control, and we called you and said, you better build a shelter because we're not gonna renew the contract. The best thing I ever did for animals in this Lee County. I worked hand-in-hand with, your staff members came to my spay-neuter clinic, we showed you our suggestions for building a surgery center. I did ninety thousand surgeries in the twenty-five years that I was there, could not have done it without the help of the county. Your animal control officers kept my cards in your trucks, and then they would call me, we've got a problem, here's their name, here's their number, see if you can help them. I had a problem, I called them and said, I think we got a problem at this address, can you check these people out? Cannot say enough for what the shelter is that we have, the beautiful facilities, they've got a generator, I'm going there when the hurricane comes again, so, anyway, I just, Andrea, Brandon, just a little bit of information, I don't know, some of you may know, when I started this, thirty, twenty-five years ago, in the United States, all over the country, euthanizing somewhere around thirteen million adoptable dogs and cats, we are now down to a, before COVID, we had a little hiccup during COVID, we're now somewhere around three million. We don't euthanize for space, and that's, you know, in your, because of what we've done down there, a lot of me working with them and lots of other people working too. I've reviewed the ordinance, for us animal people, you'll never give us enough money, you'll never build a stronger enough ordinance, but this goes so much farther and helps them a lot. Whether you wanna try and make it go further, or let's adopt it now, you'll have to make that decision, but thank you for this, and thank you for what you do in your capacity to help the animals in Lee County.
Thank you for all your efforts. Teresa, thank you for your twenty-five years of service, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
I've got one of those certificates years ago.
Thank you. Next speaker, Nicole Morrison, Nicole Morrison. And after Nicole, we have Victoria Redstall.
Good morning, I call Ferguson Morrison for the record. I'm here today as a county resident with no group affiliation or agenda other than advocating that positive current animal welfare practices be incorporated in the proposed Animal Services ordinance. Two weeks ago, I sent the Board and County Management an email detailing some of these issues, some of which were corrected, which I appreciate. To start off, in Section twenty-six E, there is no State Board of Health, it is the Department of Health as correctly referenced in Parts B, H, and I. The statement in Parts A and B should include all dogs, cats, and ferrets, not only owned, per the Department of Health Rabies Prevention and Control in Florida Guidance Documents. Second, the definition of adequate shelter is inconsistent with animal welfare guidelines for housing. As written, the shelter only needs to be large enough to allow the animal to stand and turn around without touching the sides of its enclosure, with no mention of bedding, ambient temperature requirements, no area for food and water for animals to avoid their waste, to exercise, be enriched, or provided social contact. Animals will not be able to perform species-specific behaviors per the shelter restrictions as defined. Third, the definition of a distress is incorrect, and the use of this term in Section Five is open to interpretation. Fourth, in Section Thirteen, the use of the term physical violence is inappropriate as it implies a psychological state in companion animals that cannot be reliably attributed to them. Fifth, the subjective nature of Sections four K, five A, thirteen A, and twenty-seven D leaves these open to individual interpretation with no guidelines accompanying them. Lastly, in Section Twenty-One, the definition of a microchip is a microchip. I recommend replacing the redundant word with transponder. Due to the focus by the county on microchipping for animal identification and owner reunification, I recommend the department consider mandatory microchipping with registration through Animal Services and the Microchip Company, and offer a one-year grace period prior to this mandate being effective. If the lives of animals are to improve in Lee County, changes to the ordinance are needed prior to Board approval using current animal welfare guidelines. This wanted to ensure that a minimum standard of care is met in homes and include objective measures enabling county employees to approach animal cases with minimal subjectivity and personal bias. I am happy to collaborate and provide professional assistance in this matter. I appreciate everyone's time, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Victoria, Victoria Redstall. After Victoria, we have Miranda Wyatt.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. I am just wanting to bring back into the ordinance, the licensing for, just the licensing for breeders, not because I'm promoting breeding of dogs and cats, but because it's going to eliminate the people that are illegally breeding, and I believe that's the source of all the problems of the overpopulation of dogs and cats in Lee County, it's the ones running in the streets, the ones that end up at the DAS here in Lee County, it's the illegal breeding, so if you can bring that back into the ordinance, that there is the ordinance that was there before, for them, they have to have a permit to be able to breed dogs or cats, then that is going to eliminate the people that would never get a permit, which I would say, and I can speak because I am an alien, that would eliminate the illegal aliens. So, if the ordinance is in place and illegal aliens are in our country, breaking the law, breeding illegally, dogfighting, tying them up outside, letting them go in the streets, then that is, that means that these wonderful sheriffs who do such a great job can use their two-eight-seven G program, and they can arrest these people because then they'll be breaking the law, but if there's not a law in place, they can't do that. So we need our wonderful sheriffs to use the two-eight-seven G program, get these people out, because the majority of them statistically are illegal aliens doing it, that will reduce the population in the DAS, that will reduce the population of the dogs and cats in the streets, I think it will reduce the population anywhere, we get them back to their countries, and I promise you, me, I will place those dogs and cats in lovely, wonderful homes, because I've been doing so for quite a while, just off the cuff, I just really think that could be put in place if we could bring it back into the ordinance. Thank you, gentlemen, for having me.
Thank you. Miranda Wyatt. And after Miranda, we have Linda Schelmer.
Hello. Eleven years since the last ordinance change, where is the spay and neuter mandates? The people who put this together have no idea what's needed and what goes on behind these bloody doors, starting with the thousands killed, which we would, which would change with the spay and neuter mandate, like you actually approved in two thousand and fourteen, before it was repealed, especially for cats. This county is so overpopulated with feral cats that you included nursing cats and their litters to be murdered, newsflash, they already do that. It's standard procedure that cats that are pregnant are killed before they even arrive at the facility, yet no spay and neuter mandate included this time, which would literally solve or resolve or help resolve this issue, it would also help resolve the dog massacres you have on a daily basis. If you instituted a spay and neuter ordinance, it would eliminate a huge intake of dogs that are killed on their fourth and sixth day, yet there's no spay and neuter mandate on the table, which you actually approved in two thousand and fourteen, but it was repealed. Why wasn't it added this time? Half the county doesn't even turn dogs in because they know what's gonna happen, they pull public record, they know they're gonna be killed, they, it's public record and they, they pull it. The spay and neuter ordinance would help change this, instead, they send them out of county to rescues or rehome them. The people who put this together have, don't have a clue of what's going on here, that the spay and neuter ordinance should be attempted again, which would actually make a difference. Taxpayers even own a spay and neuter van that sits on the facility property, collecting dust because money is spent where it's not needed. What is needed is to hire a qualified vet to do spay and neuter clinics in this van, which was literally the plan. The budget is mismanaged, buying so much euthanasia juice it could fill a pond, when a spay and neuter ordinance would change so much. We know you love seeing our faces here, but if proper change were made with a spay and neuter ordinance that would pass, you would barely see us ever again. Please add the mandate.
Thank you. So, I'm making my first action as temporary chair while the chair is indisposed. Next speaker is Linda Schelmer, followed by Clarissa Scherzer.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here obviously to talk about some proposed change, at least one particular one that I have a concern with in regards to the repeal and replace. In Item twenty-seven, it is clearly, it is most unclear as to intent for this use in real-life application. This all began with you beginning, changing the description of the commercial animal establishment to an animal facility, which now includes for-profit and not-for-profit entities. In Item twenty-seven in particular, it states that Animal Services shall have the authority to enter and inspect any animal facility. This clearly will include bona fide rescues. Although legitimate, responsible rescues would not mind this, this could be a... a potential overreach situation for these rescues that do not have a great relationship with Lee County, and there are many because of the disagreement in their practices and policies. There seems to have been an extensive time and unrealistic time thoughts put into these, and the reality is, it's a clear violation of the Fourth Amendment. None of these implemented without permission. Why is it so important to spend your time to come up with these ambiguous, at best, ordinance changes? What is the intent of this? What is the use? I'm finding that throughout most of these, a lot of these are leading towards potential attempts to go after backyard breeders. So I can get some of that. But in fact, Item Twenty-Seven could be misused and abused, as written, for people not knowing their constitutional rights, and for those that implicitly trust that the intent that these officers have the information they obtain will be used positively, and not misconstrued or used to curate a tortuous legal issue for this person. We would like to see clarification on the intent of this particular change, and receive an explanation as to just how this will be implemented in the real world. We are in desperate straits here in our county. We are overrun with backyard breeders, loose, unneutered, unspayed animals, suffering and dying in our very own backyards, inclusive of our very own county facility. We need to see something that addresses that directly. Backyard breeder registration, mandatory spay and neuter, we need it, guys. Just somewhere in there, could we do something to prevent the overbreeding of animals directly, and just hit these backyard breeders where they need to be, and get them out of here. Collier County just instituted a breeder registration, which is probably going to force a lot of those guys over in Collier County, over our county line, and making our issue worse. If we don't do the same as what they did, it could get far worse. That's, yeah. Please help. Put something in there.
Thank you. That was Clarissa. Next speaker is Ally Ebert. Ebert? Sorry if I've mispronounced that, followed by Kaylee Theroux.
Hello. My name is Ally Ebert. I'm a certified veterinary technician, a certified veterinary practice manager, and part owner of a new veterinary clinic in our community. I have been working with Lee County Domestic Animal Services to try to help fill the need for pets that need to be spayed and neutered or get medical care at our facility. They have one veterinarian right now to service all of these many, many pets that need it. I wanted to touch on a little something with the ordinance. I was part of a meeting to discuss the ordinance with some of our community, with Cape Coral Animal Shelter, Gulf Coast Humane Society, some of the rescue groups, we're all there. Something that I had not understood about the difference in an ordinance versus statutes, protocols, and guidelines. An ordinance is kind of the top of the umbrella, and all the other things filter down from that. So while we're wanting very explicit, concise changes, we want those in places like the statutes and the protocols, and a different place, not necessarily in the ordinance. So I agree, spaying and neutering needs to be mandatory, and microchipping needs to be important, and we need to have licensing for breeders. Those are not necessarily the place in this ordinance. This ordinance is something that's already in place, that was long overdue for needing updating, and it's a huge process to get an ordinance changed. And so this is just one step of five hundred million that Lee County is working to make changes based on the feedback from the community and what we really need. There's been a lot of attacking going on of the Domestic Animal Services employees and volunteers, and that does not encourage talented veterinary professionals to want to work there. It is really hard to take a position at a place, knowing that no matter what you do, you will be crucified in the public. And so that's another piece that needs to be kind of looked at as well. Lee County has been very transparent with me. They have been very communicative. They have welcomed people to tour their facility. I've been in the back. I've seen all the animals. I've also been a sucker, and we have several animals at our clinic that we foster because I can't help it. But they, I would like to see everybody coming and working together with solutions, coming up with ways to help and be supportive, because without Lee County Domestic Animal Services, we'd all be lost. So I think this ordinance is very important. The changes that are in here are amazing, and it gives a stepping stone to be able to change the statutes, the protocols, all the other little things that they're trying to do.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Kaylee Theroux, followed by Jeannie Jane.
Hello again, commissioners. Hope you all had a happy Thanksgiving. My name is Kaylee Theroux, president of Fortunate Ferals. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and for the honest, productive conversations I've had with Lee County leadership throughout the past several weeks. I truly appreciate the openness and the effort from everyone involved. It is clear that they're working hard with the resources that they do have. At one of the ordinance revision meetings, I submitted a detailed ordinance revision summary. It included updated definitions, clear nuisance language, and mitigation before enforcement process, a licensing exemption for TNR cats, a reasonable stray hold, an entirely new community cat TNR section, and a realistic explanation of what should not be considered a nuisance. I also suggested exploring return to fields, a proven approach that helps reduce unnecessary intake and aligns with national recommendations. Right now, our nuisance wording isn't very user-friendly. It unintentionally suggests that anything that annoys someone can be considered a nuisance, and that's likely part of why Lee County gets as many calls and intakes they do a day. Lee County leadership told me that some of the language that I submitted sounded more like guidelines than an actual ordinance text, and I took that feedback seriously. Excuse me, I was also told that any terminology requiring definitions had to be written inside of the actual ordinance itself. So that is exactly why I suggested a community cat TNR section, because without it, there's really nowhere for these definitions or processes to legally exist. After that meeting, I continued researching about how other counties structure their animal ordinance laws. That's what I found, Cook County, Illinois, which has an entire ordinance article specifically for community cats and TNR management. Their ordinance includes well-defined terminology, caretaker responsibilities, nuisance standards, and ACO procedures written in proper legal format. And when I went back to look at what effective ordinance wording looks like, I found that many of the definitions and standards in successful counties were very similar to what I had suggested. It reassured me that the language in our revision summary aligns with proven, workable ordinance models. And when you consider Lee County takes in twenty cats every single day, seven hundred every month, and only one percent go back to an owner, it become ever reclaimed, excuse me, I want to rephrase that, ever reclaimed from an owner, it becomes even more important that in our ordinance support, in our ordinance, it supports humane, effective strategies that address the issue instead of cycling cats through intake. I also want to highlight something positive from my conversations with Lee County. ACO staff are willing to participate in guideline discussions, including helping develop standards and mitigation before enforcement framework for our legal and community cats. That willingness shows that we're all trying to move together towards consistency and better outcomes. But guidelines alone only work if the ordinance provides the foundation. Without the definition, structure in place, guidelines turn into interpretations, and that's where inconsistencies and conflict can happen.
Ms., you're.
Sorry, I know. I went slow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jeannie Jane. And after that is Darla Andrade.
Good morning, commissioners. The ordinance revision does not incorporate all the protections that already exist in statute. All of the following are in Section Three of the ordinance. Number four, page nine. One important example is that keeping an animal in an enclosure without daily exercise is not included in the draft. Florida Statute 82813 clearly states that keeping an animal in an enclosure, quote, "without wholesome exercise and change of air," unquote, is a first-degree misdemeanor. This is a serious omission. I would also like to note a recent comment by volunteers. The morning after a recent holiday closure, they could immediately identify which dogs were potty-trained because their kennels were still clean, despite not having been taken out since three-thirty the previous day. That is not acceptable, and is precisely why daily exercise requirements matter, especially for stray hold dogs. Also, number four, page ten. In subsection six, the phrase "caretakers of registered TNR colonies" has been deleted. Caretakers of TNR colonies should remain exempt. Their work is recognized statewide as critical to managing community cat populations, and they should not be unintentionally criminalized or restricted. Number eight, page thirteen. The draft includes any animal to roam at large as a nuisance. Feral and community cats should not be exempt, should be exempt. These cats are outdoors by definition. Labeling them nuisance undermines the TNR programs. Number twelve, page fifteen. Feral and community cats should also be listed as exempt here. The failure to include this exemption will result in unnecessary impoundments and costs to the county. Number twenty-five, page twenty-five to twenty-six. The draft increases the stray hold period for cats without identification to one day, while dogs receive three. A one-day hold for adoptable unclaimed cats is not acceptable. Cats deserve the same opportunity as dogs for families to reclaim them, especially considering how often cats are indoor/outdoor pets or accidentally lost. Additionally, subsection C allows Animal Services to reduce the hold period at their discretion. The ability to extend or reduce the hold period should remain expressly in the ordinance, not move to internal guidelines that can be changed without public input. The word extended should absolutely remain to protect animals and ensure transparency. In closing, these concerns reflect the need for stronger clarity, consistency with state law, and protection for both animals and the people who care for them. I respectfully request that the board revise these sections before considering adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Daria Andrea from Animal Control, Arcadia Street? Okay. Joyce Campana? Joyce from District Two, come on down. I say it for you. You don't have to tell us.
I won't disappoint.
You've got four great commissioners here, though.
Good morning.
Good morning, Joyce.
My name is Joyce Campana. I'm a resident of District Two. I don't consider myself a radical activist, but appreciate the compliment to be included in a group of esteemed radical activists like Jane Fonda and Abby Hoffman. Thank you. I'm here to comment on the Lee County Domestic Animal Services Ordinance. I have a couple of issues that I think need to be tweaked before you pass this. On page one of the proposed change, a definition of animal reads "every living dumb creature." Well, gentlemen, you might want to reconsider that, because I know a lot of living dumb creatures that I don't think the Domestic Animal Services is going to want to pick up. Human beings might be at risk. Merriam-Webster definition of an animal is "any animal that is not a human being." That would leave some of us in the clear of getting picked up. Number two, the section on redemption and disposition of impounded and unwanted animals seems to give conflicting dates on when an animal becomes property of Domestic Animal Services. Dogs get three consecutive days, but cats only get one day? Why? What's the difference to require that? Finally, over the years, there has been much discussion and controversy about the length of time an animal is held before it is euthanized. I don't think this ordinance has addressed the elephant in the room. The proposed changes define euthanasia, but do not clearly define circumstances under which Domestic Animal Services will euthanize animals. If you're going to run a kill shelter, at least have the guts to define the circumstances under which they should be killed. And I'm not saying that it won't always be necessary. I understand there are some reasons you would do that, but address it. I recommend this proposed ordinance be set back for additional refinement and tweaking. Consideration should be given to using a citizens group for further input, as the board did regarding harking and Boca Grand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Thomas? I have a card for Mary Thomas. There's no item here. I assume you're speaking on this item, or there's?
I messed that whole thing up. I'm sorry. But I thought Mr. Harper helped me.
Are you here for the animal? Okay, there's nothing on there. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. As you know, my name is Mary Thomas, and I am with Voices for Lee County Florida Animals. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak today. I want to begin with this simple truth. Every cat and dog in Lee County is a life that matters, and each one deserves safety, dignity, and protection. Some live in homes, some live in colonies, and some are still waiting at the shelter, but all of them depend on us to make decisions that safeguard their well-being. This ordinance is more than a procedural language. For the animals it affects, it is safety, stability, and sometimes survival. That is why we are asking that the key protections we've outlined be placed directly into the ordinance itself, and not into just the guidelines. Those can be changed quietly, without public notice or accountability. If it is not the law, it is not truly protected. For cats, we are asking for clarity, fairness, and compassion. Community cats do not have one owner, yet without a proper definition, the volunteers who help them, their caretakers, can be treated as if they own animals they cannot control. These caretakers give their time, resources, and their hearts to reduce shelter intake at no cost to the community, to the county. They deserve legal clarity and not vulnerability. Trap-neuter return works. Returning a healthy ear-tip cat to its home territory is not abandonment. It is humane population. Ear-tip cats should be protected and not swept into the system. TNR is the only approach that stops litters before they're born from entering the system and easing the burden on our shelter. We also urge you to consider a meaningful hold period for unidentified cats. Many families work long hours and may not realize their cat was picked up. A three-business-day hold provides a fair and humane balance. It could be the difference between reclaiming a beloved pet or losing them forever. For dogs, we ask for strengthened humane kenneling standards and basic behavior support. Dogs in the shelter are legally required to have a change of air, meaning they must be taken out of their kennels for fresh air relief and emotional decompression. Without this, dogs deteriorate emotionally and physically. When dogs spend long stretches without enrichment or interaction, their stress increases and their adaptability decreases. Humane housing, daily relief from their kennels, and behavioral enrichment saves lives, shortens length of stay, and leads to better outcomes. Finally, we ask for clear definitions of animal and nuisance animal to ensure fair, consistent enforcement. These definitions shape how the ordinance is applied, and they must be objective, transparent, and rooted in behavior, not subjective judgment. Commissioners, today you had the ability to create an ordinance that reflects who we are as a community, compassionate, responsible, and committed to doing better for the animals that cannot speak for themselves. Cats and dogs deserve equal protection under the law, and the people who care for them deserve quality, I'm sorry, clarity and stability. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tricia McMillan. Tricia McMillan. Marcia Ellis. After Marcia, we have a few cards. There was no item on it. Marcy Hernandez.
Could you put that on the record? Marcia Ellis, for the record, I'm submitting some documents that I think would be of interest. I encourage you to check them out, as I have shared them with Lee County as well over the past couple of weeks. First of all, I would like to say that I think that there have been meetings that have been held with groups that discuss things, and it's not really been fair or equal. Not everyone has had an opportunity to benefit from full-blown community engagement, because we do get better and we learn from this topic about how we can preserve that human-animal bond in our community, and we can create an ordinance that reflects the values of our community. So I think that that is a big missing piece. Also feel like there is a bit of an issue with trust and transparency, because I've seen many, many people, primarily women, many women, which is typical in when we talk about animal advocacy, walk in front of you. And I have seen at times that the concerns of the community have not been given the dignity that they deserve, that they have met with some disdain, and they, their concerns have been minimized, and they've been dismissed and devalued. And that's one of the reasons why I feel like that having these non-disclosure agreements for your shelter diminishes the trust and transparency that is central to having a functional animal control or animal protection. animal control or animal protection in the community. We absolutely need to have a board, advisory board, nonprofit board. There are other examples of this with other ordinances, and that needs to happen so there is a way to liaison between the concerns of the community and the department. That needs to be in there. We also need to have a hotline so that volunteers at the animal shelter or in the community can share their concerns. I know that we have the capacity to pull that off. There needs to be accessible and transparent data to inform decision-makings and address the concerns of the community. Also advise there be a fostering network and that assessments be conducted in the fostering network so that the animals are being judged in an environment that would reflect where they're being adopted into, because no animal is going to be in a position to put their best paw forward in a shelter situation where they're under stress. The hold times are not consistent with what the norms are that we have in this country, and the practices are a disadvantage to reunification. We need to work on direct reunification if an animal's chipped, and we have the ability to return it to its owner. That should happen, and that way the enforcement, which needs to be a big part of this department, can assess what is the problem. If this is a recurring issue with an animal getting picked up and can be addressed then, that's the kind of efficiency that we expect in our community. I think that when we talk about making comprehensive changes...
Your time is up.
...that we look at all of these things, and we convene real community engagement to learn together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marcy Fernandez?
Can I come up?
Not yet, sir. Are you Marcy? You're not Marcy, so...
I'm just doing the one you called in the back.
Okay, I'll call you back in a minute if you were outside. I'm sorry. Marcy Fernandez? And then that's Trishan McMillan, or you'd be next.
Good morning. I definitely think that the bullet points on the board here are a step in the right direction. We appreciate that. There's a lot more work to be done, as a lot of people have mentioned, so hopefully we can get these other things underway. I've spoken here once or twice before. I love all animals. I'm speaking on behalf of cats today, because that's what our group does. There are lots of other groups that do the same thing we do, so when I quote numbers, those are just our numbers, but there are a lot of other people doing these things as well. I do believe a lot of times we don't focus enough on getting to the root of the problem. In the case of the cats, we talk about TNR, which I'm a huge advocate for TNR. We talk about the stray hold. I don't think one day is enough. I understand there's probably not enough room at the shelter to hold for a lot longer, but we need to get to the root of that problem. Why is there not enough room? Because we're not doing enough of the spaying and neutering to begin with to prevent all of these animals from being born. So by focusing on more spay and neuter for cats, dogs, that's how we get less animals into the shelter. We're not dealing with, do we kill them? Do we ship them out? Do we do this? You have to get to the very root of the problem. So right now, I feel like we are kind of like that little boy with the finger in the dyke. You know, we've got our finger in there, we're doing our TNR, but the cats are just leaking out all around us. Our group received a grant from Florida Animal Friends, $21,000. Sounds like a lot of money. We were able to TNR just short of 500 cats with that money in five months. So in five months, that money was gone. Now, we've been doing that for another seven months with our own money, our own donations, our own grants that we're able to get, taking it out of our own volunteers' pockets. We're driving an hour to Port Charlotte, back and forth to spay and neuter cats. We're utilizing Gulf Coast. We're utilizing Naples. We're just driving all over, you know, out of the goodness of our hearts to hopefully make some changes for these animals. So TNR is really what we need to focus on in terms of the cats. Some people say it doesn't work. I was at a Domestic Animal Services meeting years ago, when one of the vets actually sat there and said, "Well, it doesn't work." Well, it works. If you've got 10 cats in a room, five of them are, or they're all, excuse me, spayed or neutered. You're going to have 10 cats in five years, you're going to have less than 20 years if you don't spay or neuter any of those 10 cats. In 12 months, you're going to have 100 cats. In 10 years, you'll have thousands of cats. So it works. So to say it doesn't work, that's just, that doesn't fly. So at any rate, I know with Lee County, one of the problems that's been going on for five, 10 years, possibly longer, they always say they can't find vets. They're always down to one vet, maybe two vets. Why can't they find vets? If there's a problem with finding a vet, keeping a vet there, we need to fix the root of the problem. Why can't they maintain vets? Is it salary? Is it policy? What is it? You know, get to the root of these problems, and we can make things better, and then we don't have to, you know, get up here and gripe.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
I have a card. I'm going to call again. Trishan McMillan? Is that the other one outside again? Okay.
Good afternoon, Christine Gerard. I am a TNR person. I've been fixing about 200 cats a year. This has been going on since 2013. There is a problem out there, and we need Lee County to help us fix it. I mean, I see you're giving a one-day hold on cats, and that's because we've had a problem, and it's not getting fixed. We go to all the private places, the places that get grants, and we fix cats, but we aren't getting the cooperation from the county that we really need. I mean, we need more help with that. And one-day hold, people's cats will be hiding somewhere, and they'll say, "I can't find my cat. It must have got loose," and it'll come out of the cupboard. It'll come out of the closet. I mean, they may think their cat's in the house, and it might already be put to sleep if it goes to the county, and they only have one day. And I work with a lot of people that do feed cats, and we need more information for the county to come up with something on how to help for caretakers and education, which includes in Spanish. There's nothing in Spanish. We have a very large Spanish community, and we need help on that, too. If information could be available in Spanish, they might be able to cooperate better, because we always use the translators on our phones. They come from places. They don't fix cats, and they need to know where to go and how to get help. The county has come up with something lately, where they'll fix three house cats, and that's all you get, which is a very good thing. I've been helping with that. And then getting the word out that now the county is going to do three feral cats, but you go to private places, veterinary clinics, to get that done. But if you have a colony of 10 cats, and you get three fixed, why, there's seven left to reproduce. So we really need to fix the whole colony. All the private money, I mean, we wait for appointments. You know, we might be able to get one a week or one every two weeks. I mean, we can get up to like three at a time, but we need more appointments to get the problem fixed. I mean, it's, some counties have other programs that the cats are fixed, like on whole blocks, and then you go to the next block, and that's how you reduce all the numbers, because they, like in euthanasia, if you take all the cats away, the ones that aren't fixed move right back in, because it's a favorable place. They have food, whether it's the dumpster, whether it's bushes people didn't trim. It's a good place to live, so they go there. So if we could, like, get more advisory board going, because we used to have one back in 2017, 2018, 2019. We don't have...
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, this is fair to surveil. Everybody gets three minutes, so thank you for your time. That's my last card for this item. Is there any other speakers here that did not get called up to speak on this item 55? Please come forward and state your name.
Darcy Andrade.
I'm sorry. Just come to the podium, state your name.
I'll speak really fast, because I have a lot to talk about. My name's Darcy Andrade. I'm the executive director of Gulf Coast Humane Society. I'm also the executive director of the Florida Animal Control Association. I'm not speaking on that capacity today. I'm just telling you that so you understand my experience with animal control ordinance and state statute. I previously worked for Lee County Domestic Animal Services from 2011, 2013, and I was the director at Collier County Domestic Animal Services from 2013 to 2021. And I've actually been through two ordinance amendments, so I know how much work goes into that. I appreciate all the work that has gone into this revision, and I support many of the proposed updates. However, I want to highlight several concerns. Some relate to the new language, while others involve existing language that continues to create practical and legal challenges for the public, for trap-neuter, vaccinate-return cat groups, community cat givers, and organizations like Gulf Coast Humane Society. Removal of the only language acknowledging TNR. The removal occurs from the section formally exempting TNR caregivers from supervision and confinement requirements. This is concerning. We have multiple nonprofit organized TNR groups in Lee County that work diligently to trap, sterilize, vaccinate, and return feral and community cats back to where they belong. These groups and caregivers are not owners of these cats. They're preventing overpopulation, disease, and nuisance concern. Removing the only reference to TNR and not providing language to protect TNR participants jeopardizes a longstanding effort that has kept cat populations manageable and reduced shelter intakes at Lee County. The definition owner is existing language that conflicts with state statute. The definition states that a person becomes an owner of an animal if they feed it for 10 days. The language already exists, but it directly conflicts with Florida Statute 705, which requires 90 days for ownership of found property, including dogs and cats, which are considered chattel under statute. This consistently puts the public, TNR groups, and shelters in untenable situations. Residents are often sometimes told they are the owners of found pets after 10 days, but they are not the legal owner under statute. Next is proposed changes to the surrender of animals sections. I support the intent behind increasing opportunities for owners to reclaim the pets before impoundment, but the finder hold and online portal requirements raise some concerns about safety, liability, enforcement, and consistency. This includes safety risks from finders' personal information being online, especially if they're exempt under 119, potential liability if a pet enters someone while kept in the finder's home or another pet, and ongoing confusion about whether the finders become the owner after 10 days and whether state statute reveals at 90 days. The one-day, and then I'm going to jump to the one-day hold for cats. It may amount to enough, given Lee County's history. For many years, Lee County operated a robust shelter-neuter return program. This was a reason the county historically had no stray hold period for cats without identification. Cats were sterilized and quickly returned to where they came from, if that's where the families and caregivers were. When shelter-neuter term is discontinued, the stray hold language is never updated, giving these counts no chance of going back home. The proposed one-days attempt to address this...
Thank you. Sorry. You did good, though.
You got a lot in there.
Good job, Doc. Any other speakers? Okay, we'll come back to the board for a motion for that item. Any discussion, questions for staff, or a motion?
I have a question for the staff, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Just one question. I was really pleased to see the website, and thank you so much for coming and giving me a briefing on how the website was going to work. Just one question. Does it look like people will have to look in two different places now, though? They'll have to look on the new portal plus the Lee Lost Pets? Is there any way that we could, for efficiency's sake, combine the two?
Excuse me, Brandon again with Animal Services. That's a great question, and that is something that we're continuing to try to dive into to make the two systems talk. Currently, they're two separate systems altogether. There is no connection to them. And that's part of the collaboration with our IT team and the GIS team as well, because it's a GIS-driven program, as opposed to the kennel software that we have in the system here. At the moment, we've had some conversation about blending the two, but we didn't want to create additional confusion. That is something that, you know, as time goes on and this portal begins to really get its legs underneath, and we kind of feel how that works, those are some of the conversations we look to continue to develop, to be able to find a better way to get it together. To answer your question in the short term, yes, there are two locations that we would encourage people to look at. The way I'd like to explain it is, is one is within the shelter, and one is outside of the shelter. The portal that is there, the Find My Pet portal, is going to be outside of the shelter. It's going to be community-driven, whereas the animals, the lost pet section of our Lee County website, will be the animals that are contained within the shelter.
As an interim solution, do you have language on both that say, "Hey, check this one also"?
We do, yes. As you navigate to the portal, there is a pop-up screen that is there. It's called a splash page. That page identifies some very vital information, and then the, once you click through that, there's an understand button. You click through that. There is additional information in that section as well that talks about looking at both places.
Okay. And then while we've got Pablo up here, Mr. Adorno, question on the, can you just comment on the Sundays and holidays, and how those count towards the stray hold and what you guys are doing?
We don't count those as days, so we hold them beyond that, so.
Okay. So is that an internal policy?
No comments, please.
Yes, it's an internal policy, yes.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
Commissioner, can you repeat your question? You were covered by the audience with rude comments. So can you please repeat your question and what was the response was?
Well, I wanted to ask about the idea of counting Sundays and holidays against the stray hold, and so, Mr. Adorno, yeah, if you could just...
We don't, we don't count those days as a whole day. We, we, so, no, we do not.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, the best of the ordinance, please. And on the website, it is on the first page. Can you not count some of the holidays?
Can you please, please, no, no comments from the audience, please?
Respectfully, we didn't let anybody comment while you were speaking.
This is our turn to talk, so this is how we conduct business here. Any other comments, a question, or a motion?
I just want to say a couple of things. One, I appreciate and applaud the staff for their heavy-lift efforts with this ordinance. It's a lot of very thoughtful processes and procedures put in place. I really like the portal that allows that clock, that everybody's worried about the hold date clock, to be extended, because if they're not brought to the shelter, that clock wouldn't start at all if we find their owners. Again, responsible pet owners do chip their pets. If you chip your pets, as they said to you earlier, if we find it, we're going to even bring it back to you with free delivery. So I think that's a very responsible thing for both sides for a win-win. We talk about this ordinance may not go far enough. Well, the great news about legislating is you're never really finished, right? There's always constant improvement that we strive for in these positions, and we're all working hard to upgrade everything on a constant basis. So no matter what we do today, as I liked that one lady, it was really nice, said, "No matter how much money you give us, we'll tell you it's not enough," you know? So, yeah, she was a very nice, thoughtful lady. But we want to do our best. We've got to be realistic, but we've got to do one step at a time, and then evaluate those results, and then we can find out where the, where other improvements are. But I, I just want to applaud our team for all those efforts, and a lot of things that people made comments on were things that we already had in the ordinance, and if you didn't catch it the first time, we're going to do our best to keep that messaging going. But one of the things that we had, we talked about last time, Kristina Hammond talked about staff members being, you know, individually called out on some of these things, and I really hate to see any of those things. But you talk about recruiting staff, right? If you were looking for a help-wanted ad, would you want to work for somebody that, where the public was calling you and having, calling in? We've even had things like death threats called in against our staffers. I mean, horrifying, unbecoming things. So if you want to be heard, we want to listen, right? But we, we have to do things in a respectful manner so that we can recruit and keep the best talent, but we have a wonderful team right now that we're, I'm personally very proud of, and I know we all are. But I just wanted to applaud you for these, all these steps in the right direction that are very meaningful, and I really appreciate you, everything. So I think, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
We have a second? Any other discussion?
Just a couple of questions for clarification. What conflicts do you have with the ordinance and some of the state statutes that might limit your...
Good afternoon, Commissioner. The, from listening to comments, there is state statute which we can follow and enforce. There's no requirement for us to match what state statute is in the ordinance. So our animal control officers, if there's a violation of state statute, can go after them for that violation. So there's no need to actually duplicate what is in state statute into the ordinance. And so we did take that into consideration, but because we can already enforce it under state statute, there's no need to have it within the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
One quick follow-up. I know I made the motion already, but can we just comment on the sheriff's office having additional permissions to assist with this matter, where they can help, if somebody gets arrested, the animals are taken care of? I don't think we touched on that very much.
So one of the things when going through the ordinance and talking to staff was the desire for law enforcement to be able to take action without animal control officers being present. So that's why we amended the ordinance to include them, not just for law enforcement-related actions, but also when they find animals who are in distress or in a common situation,[1750.01] actions, but also when they find animals who are in distress or in a common situation, unfortunately, medical conditions where the owner of an animal is taken away to a hospital, that owner may be gone for a little while. Both law enforcement and animal control can come in in those situations to ensure the safety of the animal.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the motion, a second. It's been 11 years, and I appreciate staff's attempt to move forward. Obviously, all ordinances are breathing and living documents, where we have an opportunity, when they're in place, we'll be able to tweak what we need to tweak, but I appreciate the fact that we're moving this forward. It's been 11 years, and to continue to delay this doesn't make any sense.
Right. Thank you. We have a motion, a second? Any other discussion? Any objections? Objection, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have walk-on carryovers item. We have one item for walk-on, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is to approve county project modification for 10-mile canal maintenance, and also to waive the procurement process. I'd like to ask Mr. Roland Adalini to present the item.
Great. Roland, if you could give us an update on the walk-on?
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners. Roland Adalini, Natural Resources. Yes, as Dave mentioned, we request a waiver of the procurement process to move forward with a amendment or a modification to their contract with Sand Hill Environmental to do additional vegetation removal in 10-mile canal. Back in October, you approved our first phase, which was removing an island, mangroves within an island, removal as recommended in the Johnson Engineering Study. The total compensation would be, the additional amount is $441,000 for a total of $730,000 for the complete vegetation removal as recommended by the consultant.
Thank you.
I'll move approval of the walk-on item. Mr. Chairman, I do have one question afterward.
Ms. Hammond?
Well, yeah, move approval and...
I'll second it.
Thank you. And the question was, you know, do we gain some efficiencies because they're already there on-site right now?
Yes, that's, that is the case. They are immobilized, they have crews on-site, and so, yeah, it would avoid us having to go back. We have agreements with some of the communities there for access, so we're trying to take advantage of that access to the project site now and complete it all now, so we don't have to come back in the future.
Okay. Thank you very much.
A couple of follow-ups, Roland, and thanks for your time yesterday going through these maps, but respectfully, some of the neighbors in that area have been a little bit concerned about our transparency or communications to show them where we're working, what we're doing next, and just to make sure that, you know, the residents and neighbors all understand the scope of work that we're doing. So the first task, too, was to do the center island and then do some vertical trimming along the edges of the waterways up to a certain extent. Can you just clarify what the work areas are for this change order scope of work?
Yes, this will, this will expand the scope of work to the full easement or county right-of-way 10-mile canal, so it'll go up from the water's edge all the way to the bank. In some cases, 20 to 40 feet wide swath going up, so before, we're just doing a vertical cut. This will allow the hole, because that hole canal rises with water, and so removing the vegetation along the bank will also provide hydraulic efficiency for the canal.
No, I appreciate it. I, when I toured the area, you can see where they did take it to the edge of the current water, but we're at low tide, winter tides right now, so it's down a little bit where it was, and there was still a lot of vertical standing exotics and things in that 20 to 40-foot zone that you just mentioned. So this, this covers that, and I just wanted to clarify one other point, Mr. Chairman. All of the, this is a change order to the original contract scope of work, correct?
Yes.
So all of the requirements for the scope, general specifications, removal, disposal, are 100% intact?
Yes, general, general specifications are intact. This is just the additional work adding as an addendum to the, or a modification of the work, basically the scope of work, general.
Okay. I just want to make sure everything that they generated was hauled off and disposed of, just like it was originally intended, and the way they drafted their language. It was in a hurry before holiday weekend, and I think some things were slightly askew, but if this is the governing document for the scope of work and general, special, general specifications, rather, sorry, then I think that's a terrific upgrade to the plan to make sure it's all, all cleared out right the first time, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we ask for public comment on the item? Any public comment on this walk-on item, 10-mile canal? Okay, we'll come back to it. We have a motion, a second? Any objections? No objection, motion carries. Thank you. Commissioner, Mr. Hammond, do you have an item?
None today, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ryan, you have a few.
I do. Del Prado landscaping, I'd like to direct staff to move forward medium and treatment landscaping enhancements that we do from time to time in-house to obviously cover the ground. Cape Coral came to us, and, you know, we've been trying to work through this process of making sure that we continue to maintain the landscaping enhancements on Del Prado.
I would second that, yeah.
I had a question about, we have this issue across the county. I remember a couple of years ago, I brought this up for Del Prado. At the time, we gave the road back to Cape Coral, and they were maintaining the median, and they, they, last year, I guess they failed to maintain it, is what, I was told last year, but they weren't keeping up the irrigation and stuff, and now it's back on our work plate. I'm just trying to figure out where we, if somebody dropped the ball here.
Commissioner, Rob Price with DOT. There was an interlocal agreement with the city of Cape Coral for them to maintain the landscaping on Del Prado. They gave it back to us because of cost, so we have been trying to limp it along for a while.
Right.
The improvements that the commissioner is recommending us to make would be minimal cost improvements we can do within-house forces. To really bring those medians back to life, we're talking four to $5 million to actually excavate them out and plant, better plantings, go back to what was there. It's, they're so old, and we go out and put mulch, the mulch ends up in the road immediately.
Right. So what was the timeline of that? I'm trying to remember the takeover and them giving it back to us. What year, do you remember roughly what year that was?
I want to say it was five to six years ago they gave it back to us.
Is there a reason why they didn't maintain it during that time?
They maintained it until it became cost prohibitive for them, and then they asked, they terminated the agreement and gave it back to us.
Why did they take over the first place? They wanted enhancements? Is that what, I think, remember, if I look back even a long time ago, they wanted enhancements. Commissioner Hammond remembers that or not, but I remember they wanted some enhancements, and we never saw those, and that's why, I'm just trying to make sure. Obviously, I want to see the improvement there. I want to see improvements across the county everywhere you go, and we kind of want to see more road beautification, so I'm fully supportive of the motion. I just want to make sure we follow through, then we don't, in the future, give it back to the Cape and they drop the ball again, or anywhere else in the county to happen. So fully support the item. I just want to make sure we understand the history and how we got here.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. Staff certainly, and I've been working on trying to come up with improvements, enhancements that we can do in-house that are very cost-effective improvement. That's what we're trying to do, to try to get away from that four, $5 million that Rob's talking about. We're going to do it for probably 10%.
I will say, Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate you asking the questions about the timeline, because I don't feel like the city council folks in the city of Cape Coral have the history and the background, though, of this project and how we got to the point that we are today. And I listened to a meeting where a lot of really regrettable comments were made by city council people from the city of Cape Coral about, about us, really. And, and so I just, I think it's important to point out, how did we get here so that everybody has the same background and same context to work from? I'm happy to support this today, though, because, you know, I've driven up and down Del Prado. Recently, even Mr. Harner and I drove up and down Del Prado together and looked at it, and it certainly doesn't meet the standard of work that we would like to have as our reputation as the county. And so we, we have some really good proposals that are being put forward here to try and solve that and to try and improve the aesthetics of those medians, but the truth is, I do, you know, I don't even know, did we have, when it was given back to us, did we have a choice to not take it back? I mean, there was an interlocal agreement there. Could we have enforced it and said, look, no, we have an agreement that you guys are supposed to maintain this? I, I'm curious.
Mr. Chairman, I believe in the agreement, it had a termination clause, so the road essentially belongs to the county. We entered an agreement for them to maintain the facility, maintain the road, like we have other areas, but there is a termination clause for them to get out of it, and they used that clause.
And I think it's great, both your points brought up, because what I think is, the newness of so many different council members are unaware of the history and how we got here and why we're here. So it's easy to say, why don't you do this? It's great to have people that have longer histories than us. It's no different than the Burnstall Road, you know, which is going to be my second item, of, you know, us taking that back from FDOT, not receiving any consideration. You know, it's, it's amazing how we get another project because the other party didn't want to do it any longer, and yet we have no consideration and/or no additional relief from a cost point of view, yet we have to maintain it, and we have to do this. So to your point, Commissioner Hammond, I listened to the same meeting. I was appalled, because as commissioners that live in the district, we all represent the district. We want to help in any way we can, but it's important for people to understand the history of where we got here, not just arbitrarily saying something, because you're now on council for two years, and you don't have any historical background or institutional knowledge to make a comment, which may not necessarily be appropriate or accurate. That's my final.
There were two focal stipends, the stuff fixing the roads, unfortunately. So unfortunately, that work, and I'll obviously take it back and make the improvements.
Yeah, I think it's, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, like you all, I've watched this history and ran up and down Del Prado many times, but Cape Coral had to lobby to ask for permission to upgrade the medians to get it from us to make the agreement, right? They, they asked for it and told the residents that they were going to upgrade it if they got it. It would be better for them in a beautification program. I mean, I remember this going, happening, and then they just, to just say, never mind, I quit, is, and then blame us for the things that they blame us for, I think is really out of balance. I, we talked about cost sharing on Burnstall Road, and I know we're going to get to that next, but they have 100, you know, 10,000 houses are going to go up or more around Burnstall Road area, and then you, they don't, aren't volunteering a cost share at this point so far. But what they don't want to spend money on, they can shove back to us and just say, never mind. I just, I like that people remember those things.
We need to separately, so you have a motion, a second for this? Any public comment on the item, Mr. Ryan's first comment on Del Prado? Joyce?
Joyce Campana, I have a question about, this is being presented as a walk-on item? Why it's as a walk-on item instead of an agenda item? Actually, my recap agenda doesn't even have it on it. It must have been a revised recap, the agenda that I got from downstairs. But I'm just curious, again, we talked about putting items on recap as walk-ons that have a monetary impact on the county and not on the agenda item, so I'm questioning why you're doing that today. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll come back to the board. It was actually under the commissioner items, and what would happen, they actually would come back to the board at a later date after action is taken to go through procurement, so those actions would be presented at a later date and on an agenda, so it would actually be voted on later. This is only to direct staff to bring this forward in the future. Right? Okay, any objections to that? We could also, Commissioner Ryan, thank you for bringing this up, and Commissioner Hammond, like you spoke of the history, it'd be great if we do this project in the future, if we could point out, and through our PR resources, the city of Cape Coral knows, the manager knows that we are stepping up and we are doing this work, and the residents understand, you know, throughout the county, we won't see beautification throughout the county, and that the county, Lee County, has picked this time up and is moving forward this project.
One of the, and, great point, Mr. Chairman. What are, one of the things we're trying to do is to work with Cape Coral so we have clarity on what we're doing, advocating what we're doing, have an agreement on what we are doing, so we're fully transparent. Their staff knows it, our staff knows it, and then we could obviously announce it to the public what we're doing. This is clearly an item to direct staff. Again, I clearly appreciate the fact that it was pointed out, we're not spending money today. We're directing staff, because the only way we're ever be able to talk up here is to do items like we are. Staff will come back with this, they'll indicate what the cost is, indicate everything, and then we'll make a motion on that. So just for clarity, just so we have it on the record, there's no cost associated with my item under commissioner item. It's just having staff do this. Along those items, that's just what I wanted to put on the record.
And then you have a Burnstall Road provision?
So, yeah, Burnstall Road, safety improvements. I appreciate the chairman's direction. We continue to understand some of the long-term challenges with Burnstall Road, but safety improvements, I'd like to direct staff to explore interim safety enhancements above and beyond what we've done for the remaining two-lane section of Burnstall Road, to include possible additions to some combination of safety measures such as, you know, striping, paved shoulders, passing lanes to enhance safety on the roadway until the widening project can be further moved along, bring back multiple options for us, again, for the board to consider, to see if we could obviously improve some of the issues on Burnstall, improve the safety, but obviously, these are just going to be interim measures till we have a long-term solution, what I was proposing. And again, we'll bring it back from staff, we'll look at the options, and there'll be many options that we can look at to say, what can we do, what can't we do? But I was just trying to have this, on the spirit of what the chairman did, obviously, in this regard, we're always looking to try to improve safety, and this is just further deep diving into this, what other things can we do to improve safety, and what are the things we can do in the interim basis to obviously help us until we get the long-term solution? That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Motion, a second? Any public comment on that direction? Come back to the board. Any other discussion? Any objection?
We support it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
I have no other items.
And Commissioner Walker, do you have a, Commissioner?
I do not.
Okay. I, I, all I have to say is thank you to all the staff. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. You have a great year this year. Happy holidays, be safe, and then thank you to everybody for what they do. And we'll be going to committee items next. Commissioner appointments, Commissioner Hammond?
None today.
I have none.
Commissioner, okay. I have four. I have reappointment Henry Zubo to the LPA. I have a new appointment of Bert DiStefano of Boca Graham Parking Committee. New appointment of Cheryl Strom, Boca Graham Parking Committee. And new appointment of Ron Drake Parking, Boca Graham Parking Committee. Motion?
Second.
You have a second? Any objections? No objection, motion carries. Commissioner Walker, do you have any appointments?
I have two. I have one, one new appointment and one reappointment. So a new appointment is, Gary Tasman is going to be part of the 2020 Conservation Land Acquisition Stewardship Committee, and make a reappointment to Joanne Semmer on the San Carlos Island Street Learning Unit.
Second. Any objection? No objection, motion carries. Thank you. County manager items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no items today.
Still go for the workshop at 1:30?
Yes, sir.
Okay. County attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up to this morning's attorney-client session, it's my understanding that the executive director is continuing to pull that information together, so I would respectfully suggest that we continue that meeting until after your workshop this afternoon, and then we will reconvene back here if that meets with your approval.
Do you want to set a time now, just approximate time, 3:30, so we're aware?
I would say just at the conclusion of your workshop.
So the board okay with that?
Yeah. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Chairman, in follow-up to that, and not prejudging the success of that meeting, but in order to require, comply with statutory requirements, I would advise the board that we request an attorney-client session be set for Wednesday, December 10th at 9:30, purpose of receiving guidance in the same union collective bargaining strategy session. Those in attendance would be Commissioner Ruane, Pendergrass, Maleka, and Hammond. I would also be present together with attorneys Fraser and Holburn, and your executive director, Steve Henneken. I'm making that request now in regular session, and if this afternoon's attorney-client session proves productive, then I would respectfully request we cancel this meeting.
Good. You need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll move the item. Second.
You have a second? Any public comment on the date of December 10th? Come back to the board. Any objection? No objection, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. This time, we have public preservation matters concerned citizens. Any public comment? Please come forward. I don't have any more cards, so Marcia, I see you first, so who else wants to speak?
I did turn in my card, obviously.
Okay.
Thank you. Marcia Ellis for the record. And so, I'm going to, first of all, say, as a tag along on the animal ordinance issue, that it was stated in the press release that a second hearing will be scheduled after December 2nd, right? That was what it stated in the press release. So, the way it has been interpreted by the public is that you were going to listen to the concerns that were brought forward today and shared with you, and that those concerns could be reflected in some changes to the ordinance, and then that would be heard in a second meeting, as was stated in the press release. Let me also point out that we have guidance on citizen relations and how our citizens are treated and their concerns weighed and acted upon. And the citizens have been appearing before you for up to a couple of years on the issues with animal control and protection. They have been asking for you to address these, and the expectation is that those concerns would be not ignored nor diminished, or the long history of programs like TNR and the great things that we've done in the past be ignored in moving forward on this ordinance, but that those things would be recognized and that they would be acted upon with action, not words, but with actual action. Now, the primary reason that I was giving comment has to do with the non-substantial amendment to the CDBDGR funds related to the Habitat for Humanity and the $10 million that are being redirected from the housing bucket towards infrastructure, all right? I'm very disappointed that there is not a public comment opportunity so that the concerns for taking the money away from affordable housing and putting it towards infrastructure can be put on the record. So, today, I am stating on the record that the reason that this project has fallen through is because HUD does not recognize the floodplain map revisions, because it is not a good idea to put people who need affordable housing in the floodplain. And these map revisions are an absolute scam that defy common sense. We know where this county floods, and we cannot continue to ignore what is obvious in our eyes, right? So, we really need to reflect on the policies that have gotten us to the point where the people of this county are disappointed that affordable housing is not being materialized because you chose a bad location to begin with. And I just ask that you start to act on the concerns that the citizens are bringing forward instead of ignoring them. Please stop ignoring the citizens. Thank you.
Okay. Any other speakers? Please come forward, state your name, please.
Jeannie Jane. I'm really disappointed. I was under the impression there was going to be a second hearing also, that some changes would be made, and it would come back, at least so we'd get another chance to make recommendations or whatever. We had Voices for Lee County, Florida Animals. We have spayed out of our own pocket and spayed or neutered over 325 cats, and we just want protection for the TNR program that we're paying for because Lee County can't have it, because they can't get a veterinarian, because they tried to hire a veterinarian and no one wants to work. But that's not our fault, and we're paying for this out of our own pocket, and it's just not fair that we shouldn't have some input in the ordinance regarding TNR, some protections for us, some protections for the cats, and some protections for the caretakers of the feral colonies. I'm sorry. I'm just very upset. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker? Please come forward.
Mary Thomas, again, with Voices for Lee County, Florida Animals. I want to just really express my disappointment in how this has happened today. We did, or were under the impression that this was going to be a second hearing after today. It's in your press release. I don't know how to undo what you've done today, but I really think it deserves to be looked at. We've been complimented and by some of your county management that we're good to work with, we're respectful, we don't badmouth you guys, we don't issue death threats. You know, we're decent people. We work our hearts out for the animals of Lee County, and I guess I just can't understand why we can't make any progress. I sent a letter to all of the board, all of the Lee County Domestic Animal Association, upper management. I got not one response, not one answer. It was over a week ago, and I didn't even deserve an answer. I just, I ask you guys, I guess I'm going to second what Marcia said. Work with us. I, we don't know what else we can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Glenda Schelmert for the record.
Okay, I want to begin briefly with Pablo had just come up and said that when it comes to a stray hold, that they don't include weekends and holidays. I would like to read to you what it says on their website. Including, remember, lost dogs can only be held for three to five days, including closed days and holidays. And let me tell you, if he wants to stick with that, I can go home, and I will today, and I will develop a stack, a comprehensive list and stack of dogs that have died then before their holds were up. I can do that. So, if he wants to stay with it, that's the truth, then I can produce the records that'll show thousands that have died because of a closed day and a holiday. There, I'm going to also lead me into the fact that right now I'm having a very high concern that Lee County Domestic Animal Services is retargeting and killing pit bulls, pitbull mixes, Staffordshire terriers, all the bully breeds. In the month of September, 23% of their intakes, just 23%, were those breeds, but yet they accounted for almost 50% of what they killed. Karen Hole and the whole bunch all say that they love their pit bulls. Well, I think they're loving them to death because 55 died in less than two months in their facility. In October, 29% of their total intakes were those mixes, but yet they accounted for 60% of all that were killed. It comes down to one month for every pit bull that made it to their adoption floor. One died. The next month, one made it, two died. So, please, I want an answer as to why these numbers are so high? Why are they targeting these breeds? This is a big no-no, let me tell you, when it comes to the state of Florida, the specific legislation, I guess you could say, that prevents against retargeting, and they clearly are doing it based on their intake and outcome. I went through them with a fine-tooth comb. I'm finding that animals that are intaked, that we have the intake, they're listed as a pit bull mix. You look at them, they're a pit bull mix. They kill them on the euthanasial log part of the outcome, and they're conveniently listed as hound mix, Labrador mix. Therefore, if somebody decided to put a search in their system to look for pit bull, pit bull mix, guess who's not coming up? A significant amount, and the numbers will look so far less than what they truly are. These pit bulls are literally, last week, six of them died when six dogs, other dogs made it onto the adoption floor, six pit bulls died. I'm tired of the inconsistencies, I'm tired of the non-transparencies. This thing today that he just did is a blatant untrue.
Your time, thank you. Next speaker, if there's another speaker. Good afternoon, Miranda.
Hi. Yeah, this thing that he just did today by saying that they don't count weekends and holidays for the stray hold, I mean, it's literally on the first page of the website. So, if a dog goes in on a Friday, like was mentioned before, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, they are counted. And then on the fourth day, when they are pulled out of the little cell that they are in, and I don't know if, I know you know, but during the stray hold, it is a policy, as per the volunteers and staff members, past and present, that when they're in on the stray hold, they don't go outside. They're not allowed to go outside to go to the bathroom. So, they're in a tiny cell, and they have to use the restroom next to where they eat. So, the, many dogs, most dogs, many dogs either won't eat or they won't use the restroom. So, when their stray hold is up and they're taken out, I mean, how are they going to assess? So, these dogs are then killed on the fourth day and the sixth day, which has become really, really much more since June. That has, before June, that was not really a thing. It wasn't the fourth and sixth day. But that is a huge situation, like not, they don't, now, we, I had a situation when I was at the facility last week where he told me that that's not true. It's, then why is every single person, the staff and volunteers, telling us this? They're coming to us. They come to us because, you know, we run the page, and they come and they tell us, and when they leave there, they tell us, while they're there, they tell us, and they can't say nothing out loud to anybody because there's a gag order, basically, but they tell us, and this is not something that's a fait, is false. So, they're not allowed out of their cell because it's a liability according to the director. And so, how are they supposed to, you know, if they don't eat, and now they're assessed, and now they're going to be called food aggressive because they have a food, you know, in front of them and a hand, a big fake plastic hand is stuffed in front of their face, they're hungry, they didn't eat, or they didn't go to the restroom, so they have to go to the restroom, or like, it's just, I don't understand. So, when he sat up here and said that those three days are not holidays, and why is it on their website? Why is it on their, it is counted. Like, please look into that because this is just, you know, the things that he's saying they're not killed on the fourth and sixth day, I know how to count to four, and I know how to count to six. So, on the outcome report, when it says the dog goes in on the 20th and is killed on the fourth, that means it had a no chip. If it's killed on the sixth day, I know how to count to six, then that means it had a